...with the tote prices as well, and that stayed the same.
When did our problem happen?
It happened about a month ago.
A month or so ago, two months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in February it should have been pouring into the tank.
Well, in February I brought an invoice for a tote.
We had an extreme amount last month also. We were over budget last month also.
So shouldn't we approve the invoices but still visit with him to see if he can give us a price break?
I would say I'd like to do that. I just didn't pay the man because we ordered it, we got it, we got it delivered, we're using it. So I just didn't pay him and talk to him and say, either do something, see if we can negotiate a better rate. And I thought that's what we were originally going to do with talking to Ecotec and getting Bob and actually another company or two to give us a quote on some material and look at two or three different, more than just one or two different chemical companies. Look at several of them. Did you see if anybody else besides Southwest?
I've talked to the water plant operator at Crowder. He's going to run some tests for it. So we're going to try to do that this week.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to approve purchase orders with notation that we will be visiting with Southwest Chemical to see if we can negotiate a better rate.
Do you have a motion?
In a second.
In a second. Do you have any discussion?
Yes.
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 I have number nine, public forum. I have Prince.
Number nine, public forum. Is there anybody here for the public forum?
I'm Prince Matt is here to give us an update on the...
About three or four years ago, we had presented to the city council a building, a food pantry. And I think we're ready to start dirt work and pour the pudding and direct the construction. But we wanted to make sure, I talked to Donnie the last meeting, to make sure we were still on the same page with the city. Now, this would be next to the... This would be next to the senior citizen center, as we talked about before. And I don't know who was on the council, who wasn't, because I wasn't here. I wasn't the president then. So we would... Railroad street is going to run here, and this is the exact direction that it would be facing. And the senior center will be over here. So we would actually be a little closer to the street within the D, easily, to the street then, to the senior citizen center.
Grant, did you draw a placement on the property?
I didn't draw a placement on the property. This is all I've got, other Cecil right here. So we're supposed to meet on Thursday night.
And we need a type of construction?
Type of construction, wood frame.
Wood frame.
Metal covering.
Metal siding?
Yes, metal roof, metal siding.
What metal?
The central states.
So it's going to be a colored siding?
Yes, a big colored siding. We'll get the materials down in Hollins. Because that was the last plane, you know, it's been three years ago.
Thank you for shopping locally.
Electrical?
Try the hallways. All the electrical we run by.
You think Cecil Hookam might know the electrical code?
I think he knows a little bit about it. He's gone right now, or he'd be here. I guess they're, are they in India? I think, I think.
Yeah, I think they went to India.
Because he's the, he's the front runner on this. He knows all about it, I'm just...
Is Keith in there?
Hey Keith.
Yes, and that's the question that Donnie had. This is about the food pantry, the, this is their last food pantry next to the senior citizen center. And we had an agreement with the city about three years back, and we needed to make sure that everything was sealed.
And what I'm trying to do, just to clarify, is make sure that what's built is built up by code.
Yes.
What is built is done in a way that doesn't hinder senior citizens or anything else.
Right.
Keith, where's the sewer over there? Is it behind?
Behind, yes.
Behind? So you know, you've got a toilet here and you're going to have to go all the way back here.
Right.
With that. Trying to think what else. Water, separate meter, water in the front or back there?
Right.
In the front. So water's in the front.
My concern is when you said it was going to be closer to the road.
Yes.
After I said the placement on the property.
Why would you want to place it further up than the senior citizens? It looks to me like it'd be more aesthetically pleasing and provide more parking if you did it in the same placement.
That's why we're going to do it because of the parking. So we're going to be on the other side of the gravel, on that fire department side of the senior citizen center. And we were hoping that we could utilize some of that parking there on the senior citizen center. So we would be actually in the grass, next to the gravel that's already there.
You got it staked out up there?
No, we don't have it.
That's why I asked you about the...
Thursday night, that's what we're supposed to do.
That's what I would like to see. I'd like to see it kind of on the same plane as what the senior citizens did. So he just came to give us an update and show us...
And to see which, any questions or any concerns? We'll be up there Thursday night with the rest of the municipal alliance, and we're going to look at it a little closer and stake it out. But John Bryant's going to do their work for us. He's donating that. Hope I get Donnie up there, he'll be hanging over too.
Did your church?
What's that?
I said, "Did your church?"
I know you did.
Yeah, I just want to see the particulars on the construction. When Cecil gets back, we can overhaul that, replacement on the property, like Ron wants to, and see exactly where it's going to sit. There are certain setbacks. I think it's a minimum of 11 feet on each property hind, so it's a minimum of 22 feet separation.
Right, from the...
Senior citizens.
Senior citizens.
Yeah, I think the minimum's 22 feet in between.
And then we have 30 foot from center of the road, but we want to be right up against that abeasement. I think we're not going to be that close.
No, no.
But if we want to place it differently, I'm sure.
That's what I'm saying, we need to sit there and look at that and make sure everything is like it needs to be and makes everybody happy. But I think it's a good deal.
We're excited about it. Hope to be providing a better service to the community. And all the ladies that worked the food pantry are very excited.
Yeah, they are. Thank you very much.
Appreciate y'all, thank you for letting me do it.
Is there anybody else here for the public forum? Yes, Kristin.
Yeah, I have a list of questions. Go ahead, have a go on it. On number 22 on your mandate here, the way it reads, it says, "Discussion on budget for visiting from here." And then it goes to this one, it says, "Composed budget." Did you guys pass the budget, or is that just something?
We can't discuss those before we get to that number. You have to ask for questions when we get to that agenda.
So I can't ask if you passed the budget yet at all?
No, we haven't.
Oh, that's...
No.
That's my... It's different, so I didn't understand on that one. And then I also have a couple other questions. And on the public works, I'm having a hard time understanding which title in statutes govern our budgeting process. Do you guys happen to know what the titles are, the title is for that? Is it Title 11, which would be municipalities?
Yeah, we'll get Mary.
Okay, so you're specifically asking for public works, right?
Public works, yes ma'am.
Okay, let me just find that spot on my paper for you. Can you hand me just a second, okay? Okay. This says, and I don't think I have the, I don't have the statute right here. Let me see if there's an attorney general's opinion real quick. I have neither of those things. It says, "Public trusts are generally free to develop a budget in a format that meets the needs of the trust and are not governed by the budget, also applicable to municipalities. Budgets of public trusts merely satisfy financial estimates and plans without legal spending limits. While municipal budgets establish legal spending limits in the form of appropriations." You don't have a title number or a statute at all?
I have neither of those.
Because it's saying that the law doesn't apply. So the law doesn't apply for public works?
That's correct.
So you guys can do whatever you want?
I didn't say we can do whatever we want, Kristin. I just told you that we're free to develop a budget in a format that works best.
We're not going to waste budget and give out these stuff. And then...
Before you go any further, there is a title. There is a title and section that governs it, we just don't know what it is right now.
Okay. One of the... Just kind of like, maybe feel the pulse, I'm going to be reading it. And my next questions are, when we started with all our work in maintenance out there, and that when Liddell was here, she told us that the reason our rates were going up was because we were like going to be in debt to a bunch of predators and things like that. Was that true, or?
Water rates went up based on the rural water development recommendations so that we could get our grant to find all the improvements in the water plant.
It wasn't a grant, it was three and a half million dollars.
There was a grant, there was a...
Right.
There was a $100,000 grant, but then it was a loan.
Well, and speaking of that, I got a call today from Department of Commerce that's threatening to ask for our money back if we don't get our audits into them.
Well, I hope you instructed them that we were working on that.
Well, I did, but I want to let you know how important it is, because she's calling me every month, and I put her off every month, trying to tell her we're working on it. And she's getting serious about it. And I have an email, she said she's going to email me what she expects. And so when I get that email, I'll forward it to all the board members. But she called me today from Oklahoma City. And as far as the plant, the rates didn't go up because we got a grant, the rates went up because we borrowed 3. what? Three, right at 3.5?
Yes.
Right at 3.5 million dollars.
That was my question. To follow up with the second one, what kind of a...
40 years, is it 40 years?
We won't never see it.
What you have is the loan was right around 3.5 million. And along with that, you got a grant of right around 1.6 million in green. It's a 40-year-long, interest rates, I don't remember Gina, you might, was around two and a half, three?
I thought it was three something, I think I've seen it. So in other words, $5 million has been spent to upgrade the water plant.
Well, not just the plant.
Not just the plant, but the water plant, this water line you see in town, the sewer up in Meta Heights. Those three projects, basically, is what it all entails.
So we're going to have drinking water, right?
Hopefully.
We can actually drink the water.
We're working towards it. Dale, you can tell us how that money was spent.
Three million was spent on the water plant.
Y'all listen to this? Three million on the water plant.
767,000 was on the distribution system.
Which is water distribution.
And 678,000 was on the water plant.
On the water plant.
I'm in trouble with everybody telling me I can drink water when you guys have water.
And you get a letter every few months saying prolong use will kill you. Or could give you cancer.
Okay. Let's get back on track. Yes, ma'am.
On the damaged water tank over there, did we get any minutes on that, or is that coming up later?
It'll be coming up later here.
I'm expecting it later. I guess that happens.
Can we talk about the Department of Commerce thing during the town meeting? Would that be the appropriate place to address it?
No, because it's public works.
Public works, okay, I have a question about that.
Go ahead.
For, I'm just wondering how you ever got a grant with no audit? Because they're asking for it now, is there a word requirement? And I don't know how that happened. Is anybody aware of how you turn in all that paperwork? And as a part of your paperwork, it's supposed to be that you have a current audit and there was no audit? How did you do that?
We'll have to look into those, we'll look into those dates. But basically, what they're talking about, this grant, was several, several years ago. Before that issue. And we worked with a lot of the audits at that time. Now, whether we were 100% current, I don't remember, it's been too many years to look at.
Can you estimate about what year that line was?
Actually, the letter said, "We gave you a grant and signed a contract with you, and under the contract, you agreed to provide the audits for 2011, 2012, I think." And you have not provided that letter, or those audits, and we've repeatedly asked for these audits. Where are they? That's the letter.
That's pretty deeply distressing, because that looks like, that gives the appearance of some kind of intent to...
When we get a grant, we have to agree to do things. And under that agreement, we agreed to provide those audits.
Well, I just know that any kind of federal grant, they're pretty much going to ask you for an audit. Very few exceptions ever. And I just don't know how.
But last month, the council directed Mary to pay our bills, help us with the budget, and to do the audits. Those are her priorities, she's working as fast as she can on it, so.
But that's not my question at all. My question goes to, how is it that we ever accepted federal funds? Because this could be, you know, kind of a big problem for you. How is it we ever accepted federal funds with the acknowledgement that we're providing requirements and deliverable, because under the contract, not deliverable, but requirements? They have their own little checkboxes, I know. And always if you get a grant, if you get a grant, you receive your funds, you give them assurance that you have your paperwork in order and you don't have it.
Well, how am I going to help you with that? I had the same question when I came here, because I have never experienced giving federal funds to come to an entity without presenting an audit. So I was very surprised too. And one of the first things that I did when I arrived and tried to determine the situation we were in was I contacted USDA Rural Development down in Toca. The gal who was over this project, I still work with her every month. And she agreed to come down and meet with me so we could kind of get our bearings on where we were and everything, make sure our debt reserves were fully funded and so on and so forth. During that meeting, I asked the same question, I'm like, "How did this happen?" Okay? Basically, here's how she explained it to me, okay? They had a serious problem with the water plant. In terms of their ability to treat water now. What do you want to say about that now? Give it here or there. They would say, "The plant before the project," she's saying there was a serious problem. So in regards to DQ, this is Gaylene Riley. In regards to DQ and a certain amount of pressure, expectation of the project done, that basically what Gaylene said that she did was, she turns to Trudy in lieu of an audit, and she's like, "Hey, give me these reports that kind of shows me where you stand in terms of your banking and your fund balances, right? Give me what you've got." Now, we know now that that information isn't complete. And I wasn't going to hide that from Gaylene, I might delay any. I don't know what you've got, but it can't be complete, because there's not a complete set of records here, okay? And so at that point, you know, you start to question, well, what, well, we're always numbers based on it, right? As far as the rates, we're based on information that came out of this office. But, you know, in lieu of an audit, the financial information came out of this office, where we know the records aren't complete. So basically, Gaylene and I sat down that day, it had been August or September of 2013. And we said, "Okay, we're going to rip the mandate off, we're going to start right here, we're going to acknowledge the fact that this went forward probably without complete and accurate information. Here's where we stand now, we're working on it, we're going to fund our debt reserves accordingly." And so I complied with any reporting requirements with Gaylene's office every month. But that's the answer I got to the question, I was very shocked as well.
I'm still there.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's a good answer, and it's not my answer, I'm just telling you what I got.
It's the answer, you're right, it's not a good one.
Right.
And to take it a step further, that's the federal side.
Yes.
What I'm talking about is the state side. That's the...
I'm just answering her question.
Right, and hers is the loan, and what we're getting the calls from, from the state, is on the grants.
On the state.
Yes, on the grants.
So you can't go back in 11, 12 and come through with those numbers?
Oh, no, absolutely not, that's what we're working on, we have to bring that all up to date. Right, but...
So you'll do that in the level?
I wish it was that easy, but yes, we will. But first, we have to recreate all the data. They can't audit information that doesn't exist. When there is audit reform...
So you're going to make up information?
No, I'm not going to make up information. Nor would I ever make up information. What I wanted to explain to you is, after Enron happened years ago, there was a lot of accounting and audit reform, okay? But when that happened, basically auditors were kind of handcuffed. What used to work, those auditors would come into these small towns, and the information would be incomplete. So they'd do the bookkeeping, and then they'd audit, okay? Well, then there was all this work being passed because of the fraud with Enron. And now they can't touch anything. So in other words, until they are presented a full and complete set of data to audit, there's nothing that they can do. Which means all of these records have to be recreated, going back, in fact, to 2009 and so on. Is that public works?
I just wanted to clarify, Mary, can the term recreate, I understand what you mean.
Oh, I didn't understand. Okay, no, okay, I get it, I apologize for clarifying. Thank you, thank you. So in other words, what I'm saying is, I was not here when that transaction was executed. But I'm going to take bank records, and I'm going to pick the engineer's frame, and I will look at all the documents that I can find primarily, I'll work on the bank records, because frankly, I don't have a lot of other stuff. And then I will enter that data that wasn't entered concurrently. Because what you and I think of is, like, right now, if I cut checks and I pay some insurance, it's automatically posted to the general ledger. Well, I'm missing a lot of those transactions, particularly on the payroll side.
Now we got to do... I got a question before I get to the meeting. When you were talking about her thing, was that the 2009 audit that had completed in 2014? Because when I looked at the minutes from 2013, it had given like a little area in the minutes where they were referring to the completion of the 2009 audit.
You'll have to ask if council member from that era, if that audit was approved, it was prior to my arriving here.
Okay. So I didn't arrive here, Mary. Pardon me, do you know where is any earlier than 2013 comes to the town?
Oh, years ago, years and years ago.
Since or something?
Yeah, 2006 or '07, I'd have to look at my personal. Right, well, yeah, basically, it was a couple of things. It was helping the county firm I was working for did some consulting in regards to IRS debt. And then the city also needed some help training in new court treacher, and my boss wasn't interested in the job. So he kind of signed off on me to moonlight over there on weekends. So I worked on that years and years and years ago. Thank you.
Oh, listen to mine. Okay. Out of number 10, the attorney is not here. No attorney's report. Out of number 11, there is...
Sorry, you moved on, you had to speak up.
Yes.
She needs to talk to somebody.
She doesn't hear well.
Yeah, she didn't hear you well, and didn't understand that she had to speak up before you. She never heard you.
Okay.
They're going to let you hear me stand up in front of you.
Hi.
I have been renting a building across the Campbell market since I was there.
Janet, can you come up closer to us?
I can't hear you.
Oh, come up, come up there.
Thank you.
I've been renting a building across Campbell since 2006, I think. And I've never taken my trash out. And that sounds terrible, but I just had a little teeny, I've never put a can out, and they're charging. When I moved into that building, $35.98, and now it has gone up to... Well, I came in for a couple of years and said, "Is there any way I can dismiss just this trash amount? Because I have this little teeny bag, and I take it to my other personal trash." And yard trimmings and waste and stuff like that, I put on a roof pan. Doesn't go as a trash. So in the nine years I've been there, I've never put a can out. Yet I'm being charged for trash pickup. So when Liddell was working here, I'd go in for a couple of years, she'd say, "Well, we've got a contract with the city, got to pay the bill, blah, blah, blah." And I'd ask again a few months later, and ask again a few months later. Finally, she said, "Ah." And she put the little surcharge in, and I stopped paying that except for a surcharge amount, about. Now it's up to, the entire bill is close to $90 for all three. And John has taken over, and he did an audit, and he ran numbers on however many accounts and saw that I wasn't paying for trash. So I wanted to know if it's possible to go back to that place, since I never put a can out.
Because Liddell did not have the authority to do what she did.
Well, that's what he said.
Yes.
But I'm just asking, why should I pay?
Because you're a commercial business.
But I'm not using.
Well, actually, do you live there?
No.
You don't live there?
I rent there.
Okay, but you're not living there?
No.
Okay.
I'm renting. And I've rented it.
The reason why that you get a charge is because the trash company charges all businesses and residents for trash pickup? I don't know. We got it, they charge us.
Janet?
When she put that surcharge.
Janet?
You know, I've never taken a can.
The reason I ask you if you live there, if it's your residence, and they're charging you a commercial rate, you can get a lesser rate.
No, I don't really.
Okay.
Work for Red Oak. So it's like I've got two rents and two utilities and two phone and...
I would say if you live there, if it's primarily your residence, you can be charged a residential rate rather than a commercial rate, and that would save you money.
I just, Johnny said you have to bring it before the exam, so I can't do anything about it.
And he's right on that, but we couldn't make a decision on that tonight anyway, because it's not an agenda item. But no, I don't think it'd be fair to tell you, no, you don't have to pay trash, and everybody else who is commercial has to pay for it.
Well, I'm not saying I won't, you know, I just wanted to know. I'm not using the service, and don't I have the right to hold down? And why not?
Because we're being charged for you. Allied is charging the city for yours, whether you use it or not. I had the same thing at my own. I didn't use it for several years. We just hauled our trash off, and I got thinking, well, if I have to pay it, I'm going to use it, so.
Is there some way we can work with Allied on that? They don't even go by those businesses.
We're in a contract with them.
Would they be willing to look at that?
Well, we renew their contract every year.
Yeah, they redo their contract every year.
What time of year did we do that?
It's already been done this year.
Well, it's...
They came over, yes, they came over.
February, wasn't it?
It was early, it was already happened.
I think it was earlier than that.
But I can sure, we can sure have John check into it with Allied and tell them yours, what you do.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Number 11, approve or reject change order, number eight for HCCC LLC for water treatment plant in Prehens.
I think I got a copy of that. Normally, we have a copy of that in our file.
I don't have a copy of the mail.
I don't have a copy of it.
Mary, the little copies, the change orders, the little mail.
John has.
Okay.
I've got a copy back here, it's the original stuff.
No, but these are the originals.
Just hold it in the mark.
Good luck with your Mac.
I swear, I'll give it back.
Well, we normally get a copy.
I'll get you a copy, but for right now, if we can look at these. Gina, what this work order is, is the one about the beard that Alan... Okay, this is with Alan.
And I haven't heard back from him since I said to him, "What, Kristin?"
Respect.
So I haven't heard back.
What this is, is Alan did not, the supervisor at Alan did not like the beard that was specked out. He says it wasn't a true six-inch beard. I disagree with him, but that's neither here or there. This is a... This is a true large bore beer, and the difference between the two is $700.
And we've got that in the contingency to cover it. They are draining the sludge ponds, aren't they?
If you look at the bottom line there, this is how much contingency money we have right now, assuming this change order gets approved. If it does not get approved, that's passed.
I don't think it's a necessity, however, to speed the project along. $700 in the scope of things is a small amount of money. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I ask you to just put a contingency on that, that Alan agrees with whatever.
This way, yes.
Good.
Cause if you don't agree with it, then we're gonna be the same vote, we are.
I'm making a motion to approve change order number A with the contingency that Alan Pike approves of the meter.
We have a motion. I second that motion, is there any want to sketch? Vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, you already got mine. Was there something else you could show us on here, Dale?
No, that's, that's, that's pretty much it. Uh, the only thing we need to talk about, Ron, is what we talked about.
Item number 12, discussion in action on chemicals and chemical usage of the water point. I just have a big concern over the $20,000, we're already up to $11,000 for last week, this week, is that correct?
Around 10, since those cut off.
What, what was it last month? What was it last month?
The one before, it was close to 16, this time it was 20, and now we're already into over another 10 plus.
That's gonna kill us.
And then?
And Dale was mentioning earlier that when, um, he, before we had the plant built, he had a study done showing to use ferroc, and showed that water, our water could be treated successfully with ferroc. That was back in?
2009.
2009. So he basically built a plant, planning on using ferroc all along. And we know we had problems with ferroc because of, we're assuming an unclean line, is what caused our problem. Um, we've also had ECO come in and look at another ACH, their own chemical compound, and those numbers were presented to us, I didn't bring mine this time. But we need to find something else here to do this plant in a timely manner. And Dale was mentioning that he had found somebody to run independent the ferroc numbers to see how well the ferroc could do with our water. ECO did it, but it was during a time when we had high water, and they were saying it would have to run at 170 parts per million on the ferroc, which would be cost prohibitive at that time. But Dale believes, and he'll speak to it in here in a minute, that other plants in the area are running on a much lower ferroc with similar water.
And what I've done is I've asked a plant operator that I've dealt with in Crowder to do a, just a simple jar, jar, jar test to try to, uh, look at, look at the water since the rains have happened and see how close we get to the 2009 results, and he agreed to do it at no charge. Okay, I've already got the water samples up to him, he'll, he'll be running those tests either tomorrow or Wednesday. So, I, you know, I, if we were closer to 2009, I'd stand behind the test results we had in 2009. We're six years down the road, water changes, so I just, I, I just would feel a bit better if we went back and rechecked, rechecked the water.
Could part of the problem be that we're not operating our treatment automatically, we're doing it manually? In other words, we've got that ACH sitting up on top of the.
Yeah, I don't know if he's doing that still or not, I don't know if Phillip was here or not, but, uh, that, that could have some.
When you sit there with a faucet dripping, trying to determine how much you're putting in, I don't see how accurate that can be. So, is Phillip still here?
He's still here. My, my opinion, and it's the same, I, I told Ron the other day, I still feel that ferroc is a problematic chemical to go through, personally. Okay, I just need something to back it up.
Can you tell us about the sludge problem that you have with ferroc? Is there more sludge that you have to clear, or?
No, it wouldn't be more, it'd be about the same.
Do you have to handle it any different?
It's important how much ferroc you have to add. Okay, if it is 170 parts or 180 parts, then yes, you will create a lot more sludge that you have to deal with. If it's down around the same as any other chemical sludge, should be about the same.
Uh, Phillip?
Yes.
How are you treating the water now? Is it still manually?
It's basically the same that we always have, we're doing what they call enhanced coagulation.
So do you still have the barrel sitting on top of the?
No, we haven't used that for a while.
Cause when I was out there on that last meeting, we had a barrel.
It was still sitting up there, but we haven't used it.
Okay, so, so how's it being treated right now?
It's being treated through our little pumps down in the chemicals house. And we're pumping from the, we're moving it from our totes, pumping it in the totes into our day tank. And from the day tank, we're putting it into the raw water.
The day tanks, those two little ones?
Yes, those two smaller ones, they got, there's about 150, 100, 150 gallons is what it says, but you can actually put a little bit more in there. They probably hold close to 160 to 170.
And you're, and you're following computer recommendations, or what's your thinking?
Um, I'm going about, I run it on how good the water looks.
Okay, what is your computer telling you?
Computer doesn't tell me anything except the amount of chemicals I produce in pounds.
And when you put in certain numbers, it doesn't tell you?
I can take, I can take the mouse on the computer and I can adjust my chemical feeds from there.
Right.
That's how I'm adjusting on that. We used to have to do it manually. I mean, we had a ladder in the basement, and we'd have to crawl up that ladder. How, how far off the ground was that old raw water at? 15 foot? We'd go up there, manually open up the valves, and we'd have to go back down the ladder, go check the raw water flow on our, our meter. We didn't have, where we said again, we'd be up it again, sometimes you'd make half those trips before you got it set right. And now you just dial it in wherever you want it set. It's a lot better.
Does it not have a preset of how many gallons that we're making a minute, how much it's being fed?
Well, how, how the plant is set up, and Phillip, you correct me if it's not working, is Phillip sets how many gallons a minute he wants to treat.
Correct.
And from there, the computers will go in and tell you how much chemical to put in and so forth. Is that how it's being operated?
And here's what happens.
And are you overriding the computer's recommendations? Is that what I'm hearing?
The computer doesn't give you any recommendations.
Is that not just what Dale said, am I not talking the same thing?
Uh, is, is the computer adjusting the dosage to the?
Okay, if I, if I, say I'm treating 450 gallons a minute, and I can tell that the demand from town and the purchase districts are needing more, I can adjust it to say 450 up to 500 gallons a minute. Now I've got it set for the ACH, for my coagulant, the ACH, for the caustic, all the chemical feeds are set there into the computer. So when I make that increase, 450 to 500 gallons a minute, and I'm doing, say, 18 parts per million in my coagulant, well, the coagulant, the parts per million will not change, but because you've increased your raw water treatment flow, you're gonna need more chemical, cause you've gone from 450 to 500, and it will automatically make that increase.
And you're allowing the computer to make that increase?
Yes, of course.
How about the, uh, start and stop of, of the plant? Are you doing that by, by hand or?
We just automatically stop plant. The only, the only thing that we have to do, when we stop the plant from running, is we have to go turn off that raw water, for the, for the lab. You know, it's got the switch on the wall.
So you're, you're, you're running the plant automatic now?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, all, we, we make the adjustments on the chemical dosages and the treatment flow. And the plant, when we make those changes, it automatically changes with, it automatically brings up the chemical feed to water treatment.
That's different than what you were doing a couple of months ago, right?
A couple of months ago, we was having to run jar tests and everything, we'd, we'd bring, bring it up, and to do it quick, when, when we had the old flash mix system, we'd bring the raw water flow up, and we'd take the jar test, go out there and get a grab sample, then open our front flash mixer, and simulate what's happening in the plant.
Donnie, it sounds, it, it sounds like he's got the plan for that.
Cause we'd have to make chemical adjustments manually when we made those adjustments, that raw water feed, uh, that raw water rate adjustment.
So it sounds like pH is what's giving us the most problems.
PH, low raw, low raw water pH, and hardly any alkalinity, nor, the raw water alkalinity today was only nine parts per million. But that has been a problem with this water for a long time, possibly. Around Tallahena, we have granite rock, we have no limestone, no, anything like that. Well, when it rains, rains is sick. And if you've got limestone, it will dissolve that limestone and put alkalinity into your water and raise your pH. Granite doesn't do nothing. It also raises the pH of the rain. Well, now when it rains in Tallahena, it comes off the mountain, it runs across granite, gravel, whatever. It does, the pH remains the same, and it does no, no good to the, the raw water of the lake. That's why you've got such low raw water alkalinity and low raw, raw water pH. And there's nothing you can do about that, except what we do at the plant to raise the pH and alkalinity. Cause you've got to have alkalinity for a coagulant to work. It's alkalinity driven.
All right, that's good. Any other questions? Item number, thank you, Dale, very much. We're on item number 13.
So we're no action on 12?
There's discussion.
Discussion in action.
So no action?
No action.
Item number 13, presentation from Echo Tech Enterprises. They tried really hard to be here and they could not. He had a conflict in his schedule. Um, he really is anxious to try to help us still, he wanted to make sure the council knew that. And, um, I have a email I'll pass out, get copies of.
Is that the guy that's supposed to do the water thing?
That's the one from Echo Tech.
The wrong?
Yes, they can't, yes.
So we're doing no action?
On no action on.
We're not gonna, you don't have a paper from them?
No, uh, it was just not something that, it was.
They came, they gave us prices, and that was emailed out, I believe, to everybody from Echo Tech, I'm sorry, I didn't bring them with me. Uh, does anybody know their prices from Echo Tech?
Well, I was at the meeting where he gave his old presentation. And I talked to Dale, and I said, before we do anything, I'd like to see what Southwest can do, and see if there's a third entity that can give us something, cause one says one, one says another. Who do you believe?
Well, I'm really for getting rid of Southwest. We need a chemist.
Based, based on, on what?
Well, I think we need a chemist to.
He's got a, he's got a, he's got a.
And I think.
He's got a chemist on board, does he not? Bob's got a chemist that he uses.
But I would like to see us maybe give Echo Tech at least 30 days to come down here and see what they can do. They offer unlimited tech support. I really think this is something we need. We can't keep spending this kind of money and still have the water problems that we've got.
But you still don't know what the answer is?
No, we don't, but if we can get some.
So you're just gambling again, without knowing the facts?
If we can get some unlimited tech support, we can, we can see, if we can give them 30 days, maybe we can come up with an answer.
You know how much money, you know how much money you're spending a year, and you're saying you don't wanna go out for bids? You're talking about spending 70, $80,000, and you don't wanna go out for bid? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I didn't say anything about bids, I just say we need a chemist.
Well, we need to go out for bids and, and see what other companies have to offer.
Uh, well, then we need to get it done, because we're in.
That's what Dale said.
But we've sat here for how long?
Okay, well, what, what are we gonna use? Ferroc sulfate, are we gonna use ACH?
I don't care, I just wanna get it straightened out.
Well, you should care, because one of them will do a better job than the other.
I wanna get it straightened out. I want somebody to help us do it.
Just straighten it out, you have to have the science.
We've taken no action on 13, so let's go on to number 14, and that's where you can, um, yes. Item number 14, discussion in action on changing chemicals suppliers, there you go.
And then there we go. How, how can you make a decision without having all the science?
But if we keep sitting here and every meeting say, well, we wanna drive this, we wanna.
Is Dale working on that?
Go with Southwest, we wanna, you know, I just don't see where we're getting anywhere.
Dale would be in a better place in two weeks, two weeks, you would have your answers, and could we get Echo Tech here? Or a special meeting within two weeks?
Yes, I'll, I'll know more about what ferroc can do.
And if we, we have the results from ferroc and they look promising, we can go out with ferroc and with ACH. And I don't know who the other third party is, Donnie, maybe you have somebody?
Dale, Dale said he's gonna find us a third party.
Get a third party bid on those two?
I can do that.
Let's come back.
Whatever the council wants.
I'm out next week, but if we could do it like the last week in July, I don't really wanna push it any further than that.
How much chemicals we got purchased to supply us now?
Phillip, how long can we go on our current supplies of chemicals? Every four days, depends how many totes he has. We know we need at least through next week to get those results, so as soon as you have those results.
I can call, I can call.
Call Echo Tech, if we can get it up there to the 20th. Everybody in town, the week of the 20th?
As far as I know.
Um, 22nd.
So we need to do it on the 20th, the 23rd.
What day is Monday?
Monday or Tuesday.
How much chemicals you got to operate on? How much, how many days can you go with what you've got?
Excuse me?
How many days can you go with the chemicals you've got?
I've got two more being delivered Thursday, that's already on that, that last bill. I've got two full ones out there, so I'll have four.
Sixteen days.
I, well, probably closer to three, don't end by Thursday, but I'll have to.
Which is around you, 10 days?
No, 16, about four days per tow.
Four days, okay.
About 16.
So we got at least two weeks.
We got two weeks.
Take this into hand too, I don't want to continue, you're lowering it, lowering it too.
Yes, because a camp, one camp is going off this Friday.
Is, which one?
Boy Scouts is going off, their last people leave on Friday, Saturday morning, so they'll be.
Okay, that's, that's, that's gonna, that's gonna lower our treatment flow, that will lower the amount of chemicals that we.
You still have KBA for two more weeks, but you're.
And once they're gone, we'll probably, since we're treating 650, when Boy Scouts are gone, we'll probably be treating 550. When KBA's gone, probably treating 450, 480. And that's gonna really, that's gonna lower the ACH feed, and your caustic feed, and your chlorine feed. All your chemical feeds will go down. Cause like I said before, when the water treatment, raw water treatment flow goes down, your chemical feeds go down, the amount of chemicals you feed. Your dosage will stay the same, like an 18 parts per million, that will stay the same, you just won't be feeding as much.
Thank you.
And that's good news, we can slow it down.
Okay, so let's, let's wait until the 20th, 21st, get ahold of Echo Tech, to get our ferroc results in. Chemicals are repurchased, and we'll make the decision at the end of this month. Uh, just ask Gina if we can move down.
Have his information for us at that point?
Right, ask Gina if we can move down to number 23, and let Dale talk about one of the things that we didn't know we had to, on the.
Item number 23, your business, at this time, we have some.
The, uh, you want me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay, the, the, the tank that has the sludge in it.
Uh huh.
Okay, the tank that has the sludge in it right now, talk to the contractor that's out there now. Can't get anybody interested in dealing with the Feric because it is a very corrosive material. Nobody wants to run it through their pumps. We currently show that the liquidated damages on that contractor is anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000. I've called Real Development, tried to find the exact number and I'll have that a little bit later. Kevin LaGrane did not get back with me yet. The contractor has proposed that he will remove the tank that's in there and install another tank at no charge as long as we waive the LD's liquidated damage charges. He wants the city to pay for the tank.
Could be $8,000 if we get the single wall tank or we can go with the single wall for two?
15,000.
15,000.
That wall tank is probably. That wall was originally spag and that's what I'm, I mean, single wall will work.
And just to let you all know what he's talking about, liquidated damages by the contract that we have with our contractors and say have not completed their job on a timely basis. We theoretically as a community can file to claim liquidated damages between $30,000 and $50,000 because they haven't finished the job. So what we're discussing here is do we ask them to put in the tank that has been messed up, pay for the tank and put it in at no charge in exchange for us filing for the liquidated damages?
Is that good?
I think it is because to file for liquidate damages, you've got to go through a lot, big process.
No real guarantee that you'll do.
However, you have them pay for the tank and not us.
Right.
Yes, my proposal would be that they pay for the new tank and install the new tank. So that should run them around $10,000, $12,000.
In exchange for.
Something in exchange.
Claiming $30,000 to $50,000.
Remove the old tank.
Yes.
Remove the old tank.
Well, they've got to haul it off, have they not?
Yes.
They're hauling it off and it's a half man issue because it's corrosive, right? So there's a, there's a.
And they're willing, they've already said they will haul it all off, right?
They have not, but I will.
They have not? Okay.
The problem is nobody knows how to deal with it. I do have an environmental engineer on staff, I'll get him working on it and see what he can figure out. I don't know if we can take it to Alderson on the dump side or not, so.
So can we make a motion to do this under new business?
I think we can since it's unforeseen.
And so the company that we need to make the motion to do this for is HCCO? I make a motion for HCCO to remove and dispose of our old tank and to provide and install a new supply tank at the water plant in exchange for, tell me that term again?
Liquidated damages.
Liquidated assets.
Damages, liquidated damages, that's why I asked, I know I did it wrong.
We have a motion.
Do we need to consider about the size of tank or equality of tank, the double wall of tanks?
That makes specs.
That makes specs.
She makes specs, question, John?
So we have a motion.
A second.
And a second, any more discussion?
My only discussion Dale is are we tying ourselves in that they could be another year and not finish up? We don't have any liquidated damages?
Liquidated damages are based on a substantial completion, not final completion. They're already past substantial completion. They're not adding any more days to the contract.
My other.
Substantial, I'm sorry.
No, you go right ahead.
Substantial completion is when the plant was put in operation and did what it was intended to do.
Are you okay with that? Because part of that liquidated damage is you.
Yes, I know. And I talked to that with my branch of management manager, we are.
I want us to finalize this project. And I see the pictures of the decamp ponds. Looks like we're making progress. Is Tom out there making sure that?
Those are the pictures, man.
That they're doing that, doing it right and getting that finally.
And as you can see, that cell is done. Now they're getting ready to move to the other cell. They need my final lesson that I'm okay with that cell when they move the water back. You all have the pictures there. If anybody has any issues with it, please let me know right now because I'm getting ready to tell them to move to the other cell.
My concern was timeline. They're behind so far now. Can we count on them to get this done in a quick, in a timely manner so we can get this done?
We are holding up a lot of their money.
Yeah, in fact, they're being threatened with lawsuits right now.
So they want to get out of there just as bad as we want them out of there. One of the issues has been this meter. And the other issue has been the decamp ponds. And if we're okay with decamp ponds now, then, you know, we're practically there.
Do you need to add anything to that motion?
Any more discussion?
I don't think so.
Vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Dale, thank you so much for all your work. We appreciate it.
Item number 15, approve or reject entering into executive session consistent with Title 25 Oklahoma State Statute 307d1 discussing employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual salary, public officer, or employee, Philip Falcone.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Excluding from executive session.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Number 17, action if any from executive session, there was no action. Item number 18, discussion and action on refuse charges or charges.
I put that on there because I found out this week that our churches are getting charged commercial rates on their trash when most churches don't generate anything, don't do anything. Are we doing it, is it water and trash or is it just trash? Just trash?
That's what the allied churches that I've seen it, is the churches are on commercial rate.
I know my particular church uses about 400 gallons of water a month. They don't generate near as much trash as a residence. So I don't know. I sit there and think of our churches, you know, struggling right now trying to keep their doors open. And if we can't try to help our churches a little bit. What kind of irritated me more than anything when I thought about it was here we've got people renting from us and we're basically paying their utilities for them. And yet we can't help our churches a little bit. And I said, you know, Mary, we've got a little bit of cushion in our budget for trash, do we not? We're actually collecting more than what we're paying.
We make a dollar off the trash.
So I'm sitting there thinking, why can't we help our churches a little bit when we help for-profit businesses basically paying their utilities for them or either they're paying utilities or we're giving them free rent? I don't know how you want to look at it. Or they're paying their rent and we're giving them free utilities.
Private businesses are.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, is it a public building or is it a city building?
City building, public building.
Not still building?
Yeah.
So you do it for?
Everybody in the library building, the old nursing home.
I think they are.
Farm credits, one of them in there. There's a grasshopper in there. EOMC's in there. And we basically charge them $150 a month rent, which basically covers the utilities and that's it. Plus we do maintenance.
We're making basically more than our, I think our last library electric bill was $500 and something dollars for that building.
Plus we buy their toilet paper for them.
So we're making $2.36 profit off of the churches.
Oh.
On the poly, if they have one polycard. So since you declared that they don't use the trash, they wouldn't have more than one polycard, right? Except the First Baptist has a huge dumpster.
A dumpster is a different deal.
Out there, so.
If a church has a polycard, I think it should be residential.
I remember register two has dumpsters, that's right.
I'm sorry?
I remember register two of the churches have dumpsters.
There's one behind the Methodist Church and nobody knows whose it is. Is it us or is it Commishy Country Inn or whatever? We don't even know who it is. It's on our property. We've never asked for it.
You can check on that, yeah.
You know, we just shouldn't have, if, that's the problem, we shouldn't have a polycard and get rid of the dumpster. Yeah, right in the alley there now. We don't know if it's ours or Country, Commishy Inn or whatever.
The only thing we can do is to give the churches trash for exactly what we're paying for.
We can actually give it to them for residential rate.
No, we can't because then we're going to be making up the difference of.
What, how many churches are we talking about? Seven?
$16 a month.
You just told us back here that you couldn't pay favors. Or you shouldn't pay favors to churches.
And I'm willing to do that too, to a certain extent.
Is that not something you were going to check on? You were going to talk to Allied about that, right? When she came up here and was talking.
And then we need to turn around and talk to the renters we've got up in the building.
That's a separate issue. If you want to.
Well, no, because are we charging them?
Rent up there.
Are we charging them utilities up there or are we charging them rent?
That's not the item.
Well, I'm asking you, what are we charging them up there? Are we charging them rent? Are we charging them utilities? How's it broken down? When it comes in our deal, it's rent.
Because last.
When it comes in on our budget item.
It was $50 a month.
If you look in on our revenues, we take every penny we get from them and we call it rent. We call it rent income. So we do not charge them any utilities. We charge them rent.
So are they not being paid for their utilities? They are, they're paying $50 a month for the utilities. It's just when she's putting it in as an income, it's going all locked in. We're not asking you to write us a check for $100 for your rent and a check for $50 for utilities. It's coming in as one lump sum. But when the board made the decision and voted it in, it was voted in as a utility fee for $50 a month for each of those. Now, that may not be enough. We were hoping that would balance it out last year and we got the budget this year and looked at the figures, it wasn't enough. So we can go back in and look at that as a separate issue. But we can't do that under this lineup.
What I'm saying is we have to determine if we're charging them utilities or not. And when we take in the revenue, it's strictly rent money we're taking in. We're not taking $100 of it and saying rent and another 50 applying it up here into utilities. We're not doing that. And so what we're saying is theoretically, if you want to do it like you're saying, we're going to charge you $100 rent and you're only going to pay $50 utilities. But you know, if you go rent a building, your utility is going to cost you a minimum of $87 for your water. Your electric is going to be a minimum of $37. No, it doesn't, minimum is $87 commercial. And your minimum on utility.
Donnie, you're out of order.
I'm not out of order and you're not the mayor, excuse me, you're not the mayor. And I'm trying to figure out what we're doing here. We need to figure out what we're doing.
She's going to have John check on it.
So we want to ask everybody to pay their fair share? Is that what we're saying?
Okay, I'm going to have John talk to Allied. If the church is using a small cart, if Allied would consider and for the businesses using a small cart, would they consider just charging residential rates? He's going to talk to them about that.
Yes.
I can go for that. So is that a motion?
He's going to check on it and when he gets the information, if it's lower, we can discuss and take action at a next meeting.
Well, that's the action we're taking now though is to have him check it out.
Well, okay, sure. I do.
And I'll actually second that.
Renee made a motion. Donnie seconded it. Any more discussion? What was the motion?
Someone's going to check with Allied.
With Allied on the church's small business.
Having a polycard.
Okay, I don't think it really had to be a motion, that's fine.
Covered ourselves that way, so.
Vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item number 19, discussion and action on commissioner duties. I gave the council a handwritten, I meant to attack it, but those are the current. So long we haven't had a duty story. Animal control calls in and the police. Renee, is there anything you would particularly want to do?
Just, you know, on the ones that people just, there are just one.
Yes.
Members on. I wouldn't mind filling in and helping there.
Okay.
About that, if they need it. Some of these areas aren't that big, but.
Do we want to switch up every so often? Do you want to say every two years we switch off to another department?
I think that would give every member a better understanding of all the departments so that when we do have problems, we can all discuss it. Informatively.
Yes. Okay, so on the police department.
Technically, we can only talk about water plant and street.
Oh, yes, we're under.
Well, we can actually talk about everything. We can readjust anything.
No, not under.
We can't adjust, we can't say, okay, police department now is Donna and Renee. Or the water plant could be Rhonda and Gina. We can't say that?
Under public works.
So we're.
That's why I've always gotten police department because it's really.
Where does sewer plant fall? Underwater?
Water plant, solid distribution. Anybody would like water plant or want to move into take my spot on water plant?
Renee? Sure.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to have two on the water plant?
Yeah, needs to be two on everyone.
Donna used to do a water plant.
She already is.
Yeah, I'm on the water plant now.
Unless you want to change.
So I have Renee and Donna in the water plant. Street department, currently it's Rhonda and Donna.
The street's actually town, isn't it?
They're all paid through the water, through the water plant.
The budget's through the town though. Part of the budget's through the town. How are we doing that?
Their salaries are paid through the water plant. So we usually do.
Because they all hold their.
But their, but their budget is through the town.
Okay. So anybody that wants street department, Rhonda and Renee?
I would keep street department. Anybody else? Donna would like to keep it.
Senior citizens. I have Donnie on that now, I wasn't sure about that, but I thought.
But that's still town, isn't it?
It's just the two for a water.
Yeah. And I'm not sure, but our budget from the street department actually comes out of town.
Okay, well, it's just through the water plant here and we'll do the rest of it in town. Make a motion to appoint Renee Bailey and Donna Cawner as commissioners over the water plant.
We have a motion? A second there, any more discussion?
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Set it on the commissioners on the other first. Okay. Item number twenty, discussion in action on boardmaker protocol.
Uh, you remember when I handed y'all out the board member protocol? Y'all had a chance to look at that? I mean, I'm willing to table this and we sit down and have a serious discussion about it, but like I said at that meeting, it's important that we all know what's going on. And we don't now. We don't have- we have a communication problem. And I think it's important that we communicate better than we're doing. For an example, technically I'm on the sewer plant, but when we had a pre-construction meeting with the engineer, I didn't even know about it. Wasn't even invited. You know, and here I'm the commissioner. So-
I knew about it, so I assumed that you knew about it.
That's what I'm saying, we're assuming. We need to have some protocols set up.
You're supposed to let everybody know.
Huh?
You're supposed to let everybody know.
That's what I'm saying. That's what's the protocol. That's what I'm asking here tonight is we need to set up a protocol on how things need to be handled. You know, so in other words, if the Department of Health comes in here and sees Mary and says, "I've got a concern about that, something here at the water plant." Shouldn't we all know about it?
Yeah.
I think we should, but we don't. We don't know who comes into this building and leaves every day, as some might, some might not.
So maybe somebody should be designated.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and see, that's what I'm saying about setting up a protocol. Yeah, every board member, yes. I'm not talking about just one or the other. I'm saying everybody needs to know what's going on. You know, um-
Excuse me, I have to- I sent that email to every single council member, uh, right here on June 23rd advising y'all-
And you said that Gina and Rhonda were going to be there?
No, I didn't, I said-
The one I did, did.
Okay, well, I can bring it out for you because I'm not lying.
Okay, well, I'm not saying you're lying, but if two people are here, I can't show up.
Which is why I said on here, please let me know if we need the office staff to coordinate which council members will be in attendance based on staff support limitations. I did advise the council-
I'll have to go back and look and it's possible that you did do that. You know? But we do-
They all told me about it.
So, but my point is, we're not doing as good as we could-
No.
To let everybody know what's going on.
No.
Uh, I may get a letter on the airport. What Mary needs to do is take that letter and print it and let everybody get a copy of it.
Well, would you give us a copy of that one that you got from the department?
Jackie gave that to me, actually.
I don't have those letters either. You're talking about contacting your department's owners and the weather.
And I didn't, and she's supposed to email me what she's requesting, and I haven't had a chance to go check my email since I talked to her at about four o'clock today. She called me about four.
Jackie gave you the letter?
Huh?
Jackie gave you?
Yeah, Jackie gave me the letter. It was the third notice.
When?
Uh, when Jackie was on the board.
Okay, but you didn't get it just today?
No, no, that's been going on for a long time.
Every one of y'all got that.
Yeah, I got that.
She was calling up here and knocking on the operation. She said, "What can I do?" And I gave her all of the council members' names and each of you individually got a letter from her. Not me giving you a copy, each of you got a letter.
That's been a while back.
Yeah, it's been a while, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And Jackie handed me a letter and the letter said, "This was our third notice." And Jackie said, "Can you do something about it?" So I called the lady, you know what the lady said? "Oh, thank you for calling." You know, and she calls me once a month and I brought it up to this board before saying she's called. Rhonda says, "Well, I don't think they're going to ask for our money back." You know, but they're serious about it. And when she sends me the email outlining what she expects, I will forward it to everybody. But she called me today about four o'clock and I'm bringing it up here. I brought it up earlier. You know, so we have to do a better job as board members and let everybody know what's going on. Last meeting, we were talking that so-and-so's going to resign. Who knew about it till the meeting? Nobody, except a few. So I mean, there's things that as board members, we should be aware of what's going on. No. And like I said, we can table this till another meeting when we have more time. I'm not opposed to that, but I want us to sit down and come up with some protocol that we can all agree to and try to follow.
Can I just make a suggestion to, sort of in that same light, in terms of people knowing what's going on? Can we get our legal decisions in writing? Typically, they're sent, if I understand, by text or email. Can we get that in writing just for the record? I don't need it, but it'd be nice if y'all all had a copy.
But what if you speak to the attorney and you ask him a question like, um, like follow the rules or not? But you get that in writing and then everybody gets a copy of it before the meeting, so we have to go on the same page.
Yeah, I mean, obviously that needs to be done, but if you do that, it's a good question.
Yeah, I said, we can table it for a future meeting to discuss in depth and sit down and try to get that figured out.
When we get legal advice, they would like it printed out.
We have the- water plant's the only one that fell under public works.
Okay.
So we'll get the message. Yes. Okay. Item number twenty-one, discussion in action on longevity pay schedule.
We're going to table it for further discussion.
At the last discussion that we had on the budget, we had quite a bit of discussion on longevity and that the longevity did not cap out except at fifty years at five thousand dollars. At that time, we discussed, we need to see if we can come up with something else that we can live with. So we're back and studied the state. This is basically the one that we were following was the state policy does not cap out except at five thousand dollars for fifty years. Knowing we could not afford to do that, but knowing having talked with many of our employees, that longevity is something that is very, very important to them. I tried to come up with something that I thought would be a compromise that would show our employees how much we do appreciate all their years of service and yet allow the city to afford to be able to still fund this type of thank you to them. It's not as much as I wish we could give, but it's a much amount that I thought would be appropriate. The employees, if we adopt this, will be taking a fifty-eight percent cut in their longevity. Hopefully, this will be temporary until we get back on our feet. But this would be an amount that I think would still be a nice reasonable amount to thank them for their service, but it's something that we can afford in our budget.
According to you?
According to me and according to the numbers that myself and Mary have ran, this is something that we could afford to do. It does balance in the budget. It is- it caps out at twenty-five years at fifteen hundred dollars. Currently, we have some employees that were getting thirty-six, thirty-eight hundred dollars. So it caps out at fifteen hundred dollars. So it starts out at three hundred and fifty at four years, at ten years it's six fifty, at fifteen years it's eight fifty. There's a twenty year at twelve hundred. And then it stays at fifteen at year twenty-four and twenty-five.
Excuse me, is this a bonus?
No, this is not bonuses, this is a longevity pay scale.
So no more bonuses?
We're not talking bonuses right now, we're talking longevity pay scale.
Technically, it is a bonus.
I'd consider one to consider the other.
We talked about the budget, we could talk about a line item of the bonuses, but right now I'm talking about the longevity.
But this is technically a bonus because it can be taken away.
So if you work for four years, you get, for four years, you get what?
Three hundred and fifty dollars.
So at the end of the four years?
You get it on the anniversary of your hire.
I have a question, are y'all all going to vote on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there not an nepotism that the attorney said that we're not going to vote on, on your family's pay?
Yes, he said that we were all right.
Actually, actually, no. I talked to Sean today and Sean said, I asked him, I said, "How do we do this?" I said, "I think we can pass a budget if we leave out the nepotism part, the longevity, the bonuses and pay for family members." I think we can pass a budget. Oh, you don't think we can? I mean, I think we can.
I also understand.
And-
Well, of course you think we can.
Well, I talked to Sean and Sean said, "Why don't we go ahead and pass a budget with the basics and then leave this other stuff on hold till we can have a special meeting to determine what is legal and what's not legal?"
Within.
Within. And you can text him if you want to.
That's not what he told me.
You know, you can text him if you want to. And I had him read the nepotism law and said, "Sean, explain to me this exemption." He says, "What he told y'all was he could find no reason why you couldn't," is what he said. He didn't say you could. And I'm telling you exactly what he said. And you can text him right now and ask him. He suggested for us to be on the safe side, that we go ahead and try to pass a budget and set aside money in another line item if we want to. If we have- if it's legal to do it and we have the money to do it down the road, we can address it. But he wants- he said it'd be wise to try to settle this and get this budget done so we can move forward and discuss that at a special meeting with him and we'd go over it.
Well, we're not on that.
Well, but longevity's part of the budget, so how can you do longevity without doing the budget first to know you have the money?
But then you can't do the budget without knowing what your longevity's going to be.
No, you can do your budget. You can set aside what money you might have in longevity. You wouldn't put it in longevity, you'd put it in carryover money or you'd put it in public works this because it's all going to come to public works.
Without including longevity.
Yes.
You would pass the budget-
So you're wanting to pass a budget without ensuring our employees that they're getting anything.
Would you want to?
That's right.
I want to pass a budget assuring them a job.
Base salary. That's the budget.
I want to pass a budget that assures them a job.
Get something down the road in a few months, revisit, talk to Sean, set the longevity pay, do the Christmas bonuses, that would be wonderful.
If we have the money. But we're just sitting here tonight that we're twenty thousand in chemicals this month.
Balance the budget.
Sixteen thousand in chemicals last month, we're already ten thousand up again on chemicals. We're going to shoot chemicals-
So we're going to take that action on the longevity schedule so we can go ahead and get number twenty?
I think so.
I don't know, I think we should go ahead and pass longevity pay and let our guys know what they're going to get.
We don't know, can we pass a budget? Do we sit down and go to this budget?
I'm going to make a motion to pass a post-longevity pay. Whether it gets a second or not, you all decide. But I think it's unjust for our men and women to sit here and in a quandary of what we're going to do when we have numbers, whether you want to agree with them or not, that shows that we can afford this.
Yeah, and how are you showing that? I asked last meeting how you balancing this and you couldn't come up with the other twenty-one thousand dollars.
And you told me to go back and see what we could come up with, so I did and now I'm being criticized.
Now, what you're doing is you want to get rid of their insurance and we can't do that.
We're not getting rid of all their insurance, we're asking them to help us pay for their insurance.
Now, how do you do that and be fair with all your employees? Because you have some employees- But you have some employees that can go out to the hospital and they get an extra four hundred a month and because I'm not Indian, I can't go to the hospital, so I have to go spend another three hundred dollars to buy my insurance. That's not right to your employees. You're taking from some to give to others.
But I don't agree with this longevity either.
I think we need to table it until Sean has a special meeting, we go over it. Now, we can set aside that money in something.
That we're getting out in for their years of service, so-
But it's a bonus, it's not part of their pay.
Well, it's not part of their salary.
It's not part of their salary.
But it's still, that's what it was set aside for.
That's what it's turned into.
That's how it was set out.
So then it's a pay raise. Got it on your W T.
Can I have a motion on the floor?
Before you move on, I just would like to ask one question that's relevant to what you're discussing. We spent a lot of time talking about when our employees are entitled to here in town. You know, God bless them, I'm all for it, you've got to give it to them, I'm not opposed to that. However, what do the citizens get out of it? I would like to ask this question. I'd like for this to be considered just one time, you know, what the citizens get out of what we're paying our staff here. It's never answered, it's never addressed, it's never considered, ever. And I'm kind of getting sick and tired of it and I think a lot of other people are too. What are we getting from it? How are our services going to improve? What's in it for us? And so, especially since we're footing the bill for it, I think it's appropriate to ask and appropriate to consider. So I would just like to weigh in on that particular issue.
Well, I think what I do. I think you just insulted every member that we have working for us. When you have a problem with your water meter, you're calling the street department. If you have a pothole in your street, you're calling the street department. If you have a problem that needs a police officer, you're calling them. They're providing the services that we pay for. Now, if you feel like our employees are not doing their jobs, then that's a different issue. We need to pull them in and deal with it individually.
What did you pay for, Rhonda?
They do, and that's what I'm saying. They are providing the services that we are paying for them to do.
And I live out in Good County and I've had to call the police because I will not wait forty-five minutes or three days for a little Florida county to show up at my house. They have come to my house. Walt's been there, Brandon's been there, Brian's been there, Bo-Ken, Moreland, trouble police. All of them have been to my house to help me. You know, because I pay taxes in town every day. And I've got two jobs in town.
Let me try to clarify one thing here for everybody. This is not saying we don't value our employees.
And Department of Transportation pays their employees' activities.
What we're saying, do we have the money to pay them? Do you know that we have to come up probably about ten thousand dollars to fix the lift plant out at the veterans center? Do you know that we're probably going to have to replace one of our aerators out at the sewer lagoons this summer or within the next six months? And that'll probably cost us eight thousand dollars to replace. You know, we've got things that we don't have budgeted to fix, so what are we going to do when something breaks and we don't have money in the budget to fix it? All we're trying to say is let's make sure that we have money to take care of the problems when they arise. Now, if we want to sit there and what I'm saying is, I'm not saying we don't give anybody raises of longevity. I'm saying for right this moment, let's set this aside in a different fund so if we see down the road we're going to be all right, we can pull from it. If you don't, when you do longevity, if we have somebody that has an anniversary next week, you give that one person one, you've got to do it for the rest of the year. You can't say, "Well, we don't have the money now, we can't do it." So what I'm saying is let's set this money aside and let's reevaluate this and make sure exactly what we're doing with our budget. Last meeting, we talked about the budget. We thought we had it balanced, but nobody wanted to cut it. We had it balanced last meeting. But because-
It's a little different today.
Because certain members think that we have to give raises.
No.
Well, that's what we had in that last budget, was no longevity.
No, it wasn't.
Well, did y'all come up with the other twenty thousand dollars that we could not find? No.
Yeah, we didn't. Okay.
Their employees draw salary and they should have wage scales when they start and retire. But they don't need my duty to give bonuses unless there's some special reason. However, the money that you can save, you can finish the sewer job. The sewer job has never been completed. Pruitt Street still overflows, leaks, and you're talking about cutting the air conditioner off a couple of days at the medical building to save money. We can use the money to finish the sewer system.
Item number twenty-one is done for lack of a second. Item number twenty-two, discussion in action on budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen. Okay. Item number twenty-two, discussion in action on budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen. Okay. Everybody have their present.
Okay. First of all, does this newest proposed, does that include full insurance for everybody?
Option A is a health insurance stipend of four hundred dollars for employees.
So option A takes away their insurance.
No.
Well, it does take away their insurance.
Gives them a four hundred dollar a month stipend to either go ahead and buy into the program that we have. They come up with the seventy-five dollars- they come up with the seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents a month.
No, no. Have you talked to O P E W C? If we kick this system out, everybody can come on individually?
Well, the...
No. It's, it's as a town we do it, not as individuals.
Right. Yes, please.
Okay, well, I did talk to O P H W. And basically what would happen is it would still be under the group plan. It matters not to them to pay what.
And what if they don't pay it?
They would have to pay us directly. I would do it as a, as a deduction on our payroll. It's not gonna be them sitting in a separate check, it's gonna be a payroll.
Okay, and what if they choose not to take it?
Well, if I understand correctly with what Rhonda said, then they lose the four hundred. And the reason why we talked about...
You can't do that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna finish what I'm saying. Uh, what we talked about was the fact...
Are y'all hearing this?
No.
Can you come out here and address this?
I would love to. What we talked about doing was...
And you say "we," who's "we"?
Okay, as I said, Rhonda and I, when we were talking, uh, we discussed the fact that if it became something where, like, let's say John declined the insurance and then we were cutting a check for four hundred bucks, then it's a matter of implementing a, a plan that is legal under IRS code because then is John gonna say, "Okay, I'm gonna purchase my own insurance," in which case the transaction's handled a certain way, uh, in terms of wages? Or I'm just gonna take four hundred dollars to go to Walmart, in which case it's taxable income? And so what we had discussed doing was it was the four hundred dollars towards the O P H W or it was nothing. And then the balance on that, which was the seventy-six fourteen, would be handled as a payroll deficit.
I'm gonna ask our employees that are here.
Well, we have...
We, we didn't have meetings with our employees to discuss this?
Why don't you just ask Rhonda, Donnie, it's not, it's not...
Okay, well, you said don't talk, so I'm asking...
No, I'm, I'm...
Where I work, I work for a state agency and they give us an allocation per month. We can use so much of it to apply to our insurance. If we have, if we owe more from the, uh, the things that we've taken, then we have to pay that out of our, our check. But they gave us an allocation every month for our insurance.
And, and the law states right now that if you don't have insurance, you're penalized, right? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, we have over three hundred employees and we just actually just moved the three up every July. And so what we did is if people are gonna decline it, you have to have it on record so that your entity is not penalized for not supplying insurance because right now there's law that you have to either give them a stipend or pay for it in a percentage. It's not...
Pay for it in a percentage.
Right. And so what we have to do, because we have a lot of people that are chops on Cherokee or their husbands or wives work somewhere where they're the primary and all those types of things. And so we have to get a form from the state for a waiver that they fill out that they are gonna take a stipend from us for a percentage of what that is or we have to draft it out of the APH or that they are rejecting it completely because their family number is the primary and we have to be able to show that out at the end of the fiscal tax year. And it's a form we fill out. And we're in the process right now of trying to get it computed before, um, August fourth. So it is a doable plan. Yeah, and I thought we had a, a lot of our employees, you know, if someone goes to Marketplace or whatever and come back, maybe even with something negotiable where we might have to pay them a little bit more or pay a little bit less. But they have to come out every Sunday, uh, that they currently are with all the, that they are having insurance. Um, so that we're not penalizing clients for them not having insurance and they waived it.
I'd like to go with some of our employees things.
But, but before they say something, let me put out a statistic for you. You, you, Rhonda, you wanna do this longevity pay, and I've got a copy of it here. But yet you're wanting to take away seventy-six, eighty dollars away from their insurance a month. So unless you've been with the town fifteen years, you're gonna lose money. Period. Because you're gonna pay, pay up that extra eighty dollars a month, you're gonna spend nine hundred and sixty dollars. And to get nine hundred and sixty dollars longevity, you have to be here seventeen years, sixteen, seventeen years. So unless you've been here sixteen, seventeen years, you're gonna lose money. And I'm sitting here thinking, this is getting ridiculous, people. We, we need to pass a budget, we had one balanced. If we have money down the road to give bonuses and stuff, I'm happy to do it. But we sit here and talk tonight about our, commit chemicals, we're twenty thousand this month. If that just goes eighty percent of that each month, we're gonna be thirty, forty thousand dollars over budget in our chemicals. Where are we gonna get that money?
Donnie, I have a question. I have to work for the city and the people are... So, but if they've worked to a certain point, wouldn't it just be frozen at the point they're at? Why would they...
It's fro, it's frozen at the point of twenty-five years. It's frozen at the point of twenty-five, fifteen.
But I mean, it would be frozen at the current, right? And we all gonna fix the budget or whatever. Because I mean, you know, if you start looking at people losing money, my people might look for other jobs.
That's my point. And, 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 and if we wanna pass this longevity and take away their insurance, unless they've been here fifteen years, they're gonna lose money.
So, uh...
Period. And, and I'm saying, guys, we're, we're quibbling here.
John, how do you feel about a four hundred dollar stipend and no insurance, unending options?
No, we said we weren't gonna do a stipend. If, I mean, we weren't gonna pay it if they didn't take it, they'd lose it.
I'm asking, John, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot, you would do the four hundred dollars and pay the, either keep the insurance or opt out of it? Would you pay the seventy-five dollars?
And, and, and how long has John been here?
A lo, a long time.
Okay, so his longevity would cover his loss. Justin, how long you been here?
He's arguing with the money because if we do adopt a new longevity scale, but y'all didn't.
So I'm, I'm sitting here saying, if, if we got the money, fine. But we haven't proved we've got the money.
Okay. That's a creative idea, so I gave you a creative idea that I thought would work. Yeah, everybody's being cut. Now, you, we, we cut out the bonuses, we cut out the... My budget still has a point eight percent.
And, and where, where is that at? Where, where is that in the budget?
Yeah.
What bonuses, the Christmas bonuses?
The Christmas bonuses.
They were, they were getting longevity, Christmas bonuses and pay raises. One employee was fourteen percent of their pay. And I'm saying, how do we afford that when we have to buy these chemicals for the water plant? When we have to buy pumps, when we have to buy asphalt, when we have to buy police cars? You know? And, and to balance this budget...
Oh, we're from school and I was stuck on that.
Exactly. And it would be, I don't know why everybody is so against the employees that work here getting something like that because, I mean, tell, and what it is is because of that working.
And, and, and what she's saying is not right. We're not against them doing it.
No, that is not right and that isn't fair for you to say.
No, because we're not against employees getting their stuff.
You look at the numbers.
I have.
And when it's a deficit and we're looking for a thousand here and a thousand there to put to the maintenance department so they can afford asphalt for the year? Don't tell me that I'm against these employees. I'm looking at the numbers, I'm trying to balance this for this town.
So with the proposal, it's sixteen thousand dollars excess revenue.
I can propose something that give us a hundred thousand, but that doesn't mean it's accurate.
You don't think Mary gave us accurate, I remember when she gave us accurate.
Okay, I asked a question last, last meeting. I said, "Mary, how'd you get this figure?" She says, "I don't know." Is that not true? I've got it recorded. When I asked you, how did you get, when you were talking about one budget included, the longevity and one of them didn't and there was only like a thousand dollars difference, five hundred dollars difference? And yet we have employees with three thousand dollar longevity. How did you get that figure? And you said, "I don't..."
I probably don't know much, Donnie, and I don't remember specifically what you're talking about. I don't know exactly what you're asking me now. If you wanna ask me a question, I'll do my best.
I know that and I appreciate that.
Let's get back to the budget and where we gonna start.
Well, we determined, we determined that we had one million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand and twenty-four dollars to spend in public works. Did we not? Oh, one thousand one hundred and forty-three is what we had.
That's the number I have.
Yeah, it's forty-three. This is one I was being lenient with. There we go. Okay. And we went through and we looked at the general, uh, administrative revenue. Did we not? And Renee had asked, on the salaries, can you break it down for us so we can see what's included in those salaries? And we've got that here.
However...
Somewhere.
However, under the Town of Tallahena administration salaries, with no raises, longevity, bonuses, nothing, uh, you have forty thousand eight hundred twenty-seven. But when you look over, set up the revenue at the salaries. Where did I see that? Something about five, six hundred dollars.
Well, we'd gone through on that last budget. You want, you wanted to take the one fifty and, or one forty and raise it up to one fifty. And for us to have money to buy equipment when we need it, we have to have a reserve in public works. We need to set aside more than, what we, we've ended, we ended the year in public works with a one point two million dollars budget with twenty-three hundred dollars in the bank. We can't do that. We have to have money set aside so when we have a pump that goes out or a motor that goes out, we have to have money for that. If we, if we get our audits done and we can apply for a grant and after only come up with twenty...
Who pays for those audits, the citizens of Tallahena?
Yeah, yes, and by law, we have to do them every year. And we haven't done them in five years. We're losing sixteen thousand or more in taxes because we haven't done our audits.
So how come the people that did not take care of those that was supposed to be doing that are not being held accountable? Because they're not overflowing?
No, it's, it's our, it's our council. It's our council that administers it, says, "Where's these audits?" And, and we haven't done that.
Why?
That's a good question.
How do you give bonuses if you hadn't balanced the budget?
That's what I'm saying. We haven't balanced the budget yet.
How do you give bonuses?
So... All right, everybody, we're, we're gonna try to balance this budget tonight. Y'all gonna help us? We need your help. We, we started out, we started out with a one hundred, one million... We started out with one million, one hundred and forty-three thousand that we can spend. And we went through our expenses and everything and we went through them one by one, trying to look at it. Are, are we gonna have a meeting to discuss this? Thank you. We're, 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 we're under administrative expenses. If we wanna balance this budget, let's try to get through this, okay? I'm not. I'm asking everybody to listen and let's go through this.
Everybody can listen now.
Out of order.
When we look at insurance, they had lowered it down on employer insurance. We'd actually spent, uh, over eight thousand dollars and they had it at seventy-two. So we raised, I raised, I thought we should raise it up to get an accurate number for eighty-six hundred. Are y'all seeing that? Okay, on, on public works, on the general administration, we've taken down here to seventy-two. But when you look at our actual, was over eight thousand. You take that, uh, that, that was, that included half of, how'd we do that? Half of one, one of the other, what did it include? Office supplies, we spent over eight thousand, but we only budgeted sixty-seven for this year. Professional fees, we had, uh, we lowered it down to nine hundred. How do we do that on professional fees? That's, that's attorney, is it not?
Do y'all remember? I believe it was the attorney, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm. And we spent...
Was professional fees...
Over twelve thousand last year on it, but we lowered it to nine hundred. Let's come up here.
I was not an employee most of last year.
But does professional fees include the attorney that was there? Okay, and yours?
And then if audits not allowed, separate, it's in there, I'm not showing it.
Yeah, audits are, audits are separate in here. So, and, and they wanted to take, because we've got a little extra money this last month in water, they wanted to take all of it and put it over in the Town of Tallahena. And I'm saying we need to leave it alone and leave it in there for a cushion so if we need to buy something, we have the money to buy it. And, or if we get our audits done and we can apply for a grant, take that ten thousand dollars and apply it to a grant and get a hundred thousand for the city instead of having to go borrow a hundred and everybody has to pay a hundred thousand dollar back. It's, it's trying to take the money that we've got and stretch it as far as we can is what we're, I'm trying to do. Uh, we had capital outlay, which was a hundred and seventy-five thousand and that is for the loan, right? So we came up with a figure of about, uh, what do we have on there? Five hundred and, or six hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars? Did y'all go through that last month, last meeting? And so that was that figure. Then we came up with on water treatment, uh, looking at the figures and adjusting for what we actually spent this year, we looked at a, at a, a total expense on water treatment of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, which is about three thousand more than what we had last year budgeted, uh, but, or had budgeted, which we actually spent right at that or more. So it's trying to get as close as we can but yet have money. The water distribution was a hundred and seventeen ninety-six when we adjusted those figures for employer and payroll taxes and retirement. It was a hundred and seventeen nine sixty-seven. The sewer expenses, uh, was a hundred and forty-three seven forty-one uh, because we, we've gotta have money in there for repairs and part of that was for repairs. And so that was one forty-three. We've jumped up from six thousand to sixteen thousand.
Okay, I don't have that.
That, that, that one was, on insurance was, we moved it up to fifteen because we spent over fifteen thousand on insurance. But on this budget, it says twelve thousand. So how are you gonna spend more or less on insurance?
Do you insure, say, if you have parks on the freeway, you don't insure them?
No. By, by rule, by rule, no.
But the way you get that twelve thousand is you've got the employees kicking in seventy-five dollars every month.
No, this is, this is last year, last meeting's budget, not this new one.
But you said twelve thousand, which is the exact figure that I have on my, on my budget. Yes, sir.
Well, then maybe you had it on there last month. We did, last meeting, we didn't know about it. But we have that, we came up with, uh, expenses of one million, one hundred and forty-three dollars, one hundred, uh, one million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars, which means we're still a hundred and nine dollars in the hole.
The expenses I have is one thousand one, one million, one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-three with a profit or excessive revenue of sixteen thousand.
That, that's not the budget we talked about last meeting. This is, this is new budget that you've come up with cutting our insurance.
Yes.
And, and I'm saying we cannot do that, period. You can't favor one employee to give another one a benefit.
You're giving them all the same option.
I don't really see how you're, how you're favoring anybody.
There's no favoritism there.
Because that person, they can't utilize the Indian hospital and, and, and has to buy, pay more for their insurance. And, and I haven't heard a presentation from O P E W saying exactly how this works. Employees haven't heard a presentation. We haven't gotten anything from them telling us definitively, "Here's how it works." And so for us to say that I'm gonna take money away from you because I wanna give you a raise and give it to somebody else, I can't do that. I'm not gonna do that. I think if we do it, the employees ought to have a say in what's gonna happen in their future. They need to be looking at their insurance and figuring out what's best for them. If we can afford it, fine. If we can't, fine. But like I said, I can take away from somebody and they're gonna have to be here fifteen years or they're gonna lose money. And the guy that's been here more than fifteen years is gonna make money. I, I don't get it.
I have a comment about the insurance stuff because we, we've had insurance brokers and we've been through this on a large scale. Right now, group insurance, the high rates after this mandatory law being in place, the insurance companies inflated all group rates.
Yeah.
It's mandatory, you gotta pay for it.
Yeah, thirty percent, isn't it?
Yes, and so to be honest with you, we just wanna be able to operate because our insurance per full-time employee... we just wanna be able to operate because our insurance per full-term employee went up over six hundred dollars per employee more. Well, for us, that was almost a hundred and thirty thousand more a month. So, we would go out of business. I mean, our profit margins are very slim as a company, all cuts. So it is actually cheaper for an employee to go out and individualize planning because of all the things in the marketplace, regardless how you feel about it, because it is designed that way.
And, and you may be right on that.
And I want you to know, we're in the core of large insurance brokerage firms in, of, and outsourced ones that have national licenses to come up with this because we didn't want to penalize our people and we still want to be compliant.
Well, our insurance, our insurance right now is four seventy-six employee.
Well, ours was right at five fifty-eight. It, it was gonna put it over eleven hundred per employee on the new group.
And, and we have no got a rate increase. We have been informed we're not gonna get a rate increase right this year.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not gonna get a rate increase. So if they have to go out there on their own and we know that Blue Cross Blue Shield's already raised it thirty percent, they're not gonna get it for four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Well, we'll say ninety percent of our company went to Blue Cross Blue Shield and we were with the ETN. In all the years previous, because we're all with the brokerage firm, we'd been with Blue Cross Blue Shield for eleven years before ETN got our policies last year. So Blue Cross Blue Shield, everybody going to individualize plans, even mine and Justin's dropped to like less than two hundred a month.
Mm-hmm.
For our group plan, we have no children, we're paying like six, seventy, something. We are now gonna get it for two people. And now our, our monthly expense is one twenty-eight a month on the marketplace. And I have some people, I think the majority of my office, because of their incomes and stuff, the way this thing is built, they're not even having to pay anything.
Like, it's the way it's working out, or they're paying like thirty bucks a month.
Instead of them having a hundred or two hundred, three hundred drafted out of their account, plus we were paying fifty percent. And so I would venture for y'all to go and look at it.
Well, I'd be, I'd be happy to, but, but you didn't do that, you didn't do that in a, in a two-hour decision window.
No, it was a four, it was a four and three and a half month process.
That's right.
We didn't want to drop our employees in our insurance. And then we had, we actually had to look at if we were just gonna pay penalty at the end of the year and not pay the insurance and pay the fines.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean?
Right.
Can we stay in business? Can we afford the extra hundred and thirty thousand a month? Well, we found the best rate, and I'm telling you, you should look into it.
Right.
We've cut this, I said three hundred, we're at like three hundred and seventy per employee.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, there's no way we can make it work, and I mean, you should...
You're exactly, you're exactly right. And I would just rather say, let's give them a four hundred a month stipend for their insurance and let them shop and find it. Because I'm, I'm coming up with the same figures you are with my opinion.
You can get a free quote if you go on to...
Yes, by going on the marketplace. And I think our, our employees are low enough, hey, they're gonna come up.
Under the, the margin to come up, I think is fifty-two thousand. That you go below it. And I'm telling you, it's, it's amazing.
Yeah, and I don't mind looking into it, but I'm not gonna make a decision tonight without knowing the facts. I'm not gonna put all our employees that have insurance on the spot and say, we're gonna do away with your insurance. And they're scrambling now to find insurance. And if they don't find it, what do they do?
We're not doing away with their insurance. We're simply asking them to pitch in the seventy-five dollars and then they have the option of dropping it whenever they want and moving on to find a different thing.
So...
We gotta give everybody a two-month notice to make the decisions and get back with it.
At two months of waiting time.
Or show proof of the insurance.
But you can't do it until you know the facts, Rhonda. And you don't have the facts. You're just saying I'm gonna save seventy-six dollars by cutting it out of their, out of the benefit.
But our employees should have a chance to see it.
They should have a chance to say what they want to do.
Okay, so...
We've got basically a balanced budget here with the insurance. But it doesn't include any bonuses or anything right now, and y'all don't want to do it.
No, I don't mind, but I'm just...
You know, you're sitting there saying, and if we have money down the road, I don't mind giving bonuses. But you don't know for a fact we're losing alcohol. We won't have that money coming in. We can only move a hundred and forty over from Public Works.
Have you followed the sales taxes?
Yes.
We didn't lose any sales tax this month.
You're, you're sitting there telling me that when a two and a half million dollar business goes out, what's gonna affect us?
The sales tax for June did not drop, Donnie.
Our other revenues did. Our total revenues have been down, Rhonda. Sales tax may have been up in some areas, but total revenues have been down.
Where are we going with this?
We've got a budget that we can pass. But, but it's gonna keep their insurance.
That doesn't mean we can't change it later.
Yeah, we can change it down the road. We can look into this often. I'd like to look into this often. But you don't do it, you don't do it in a two-hour drop of the hat.
We can do some bonuses if we have the money on down the road. This doesn't mean they're not gonna get anything. If we have the money to give it, we will.
So which one are you wanting proof to pass?
This is one we came up with last meeting.
Is that one on this one?
The hundred and forty-three thousand?
Hundred and forty-three, one hundred and forty-three thousand.
Six hundred and seven dollars and fifty-six.
With no cost of living raise, no longevity, no bonus.
Yeah.
And if we have it down the road, we can give it.
Exactly.
You, you cannot sit here and tell me that we've got seventy thousand dollars budgeted for chemicals. And we've already spent thirty in a month.
And we can revisit this the next month.
Yeah, yeah.
Mary, on this preliminary budget that you've got on here, on this...
The first draft? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, what did it include? Was it half longevity? Or did it, was it for no longevity, no raises, no bonuses?
Oh, the, the very first, the very first one that I picked out. Uh, it was five hundred dollar Christmas bonuses and I believe it was half longevity.
Now, you're talking, on the new budget, you're talking about this third column.
Preliminary first, the very first one I picked out. The very first one we talked about. Let me just double check that for you.
We don't know what numbers we're talking about.
But keep in mind that, uh... Will you just double check on the... There was, uh, half of those, half of those and, uh, cost of living rates is what it was on that preliminary call.
On which, which one? I've got one, two, three, four different budgets.
It's the one that says preliminary.
This one.
On the call. Donna, you wanna shut the audio?
Okay. And I went to option A, which did away with...
Yeah, but she's not asking you all that.
Right. Okay, and option A included...
There's a recap out there.
Well, there's a different option A. Last meeting's option A was different than this new option.
I know, it's crazy with all these meetings, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, it's crazy with all these options.
Because we're always trying to figure out how to manipulate the numbers instead of looking at the facts.
There wasn't an option A before, there were never revisions of what we thought.
Okay, this option A that I had before was not doing away with the insurance last meeting.
Okay, Donnie, that's the one. Yeah, this is the first meeting we discussed that at.
No, we had this one last meeting.
We have, we can discuss...
Yes, because I've written on it and everything from the last meeting.
With the insurance.
June the thirtieth.
We didn't talk about before.
Listen, that refers to...
No, I'm talking about this option A right there.
Listen, listen to me.
Mm-hmm.
This is the one that I emailed you before I left on vacation that Rhonda and I worked on. You never had this one until before my vacation about three weeks ago.
And it's the same as...
Please let me finish.
I'm asking if it's the same as...
No, but I'm trying to finish so I can tell you. You, okay, this preliminary budget was the very first one I handed y'all, okay? And then the second time around, we came back, we had revision number one, revision number two. Now, this is option A. Looks like you printed this off your email. And, uh, this is the first meeting where you've had option A in your hand. And if you'll look at the copies that were in your box today, it's got a recap of everything that option A includes.
And which one is that?
Well, I don't know. You got it out of your box, so let's find it.
That's right. Which one of these is it?
Yeah, it's pretty ridiculous.
Yeah.
It's not, it's gonna look exactly like this, but it's gonna have some extra papers on the back. Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Here you go. There's all your changes, right there.
Oh, Mary. Mary?
Do you have the mail? Yes. Five hundred dollars. So if we do preliminary budget, no longevity, we need to have longevity, which is the...
Yeah, that's what this is. But because, look, so, option A, I'm gonna show you, is this recap, okay? When we strip it away to nothing, these are the new numbers, and this is your bottom line, okay? So this would actually butt the bottom line up, and it's the same thing on Public Works. So, you see what I'm saying?
Okay, just looking at the salaries, okay? This is the stripped-down salaries.
I see you have in mind that nobody...
Right, right, right. But I don't follow by pretty long evidence, so that makes it irrelevant. Well, right, but I mean, how many ETN's do we have, you know what I'm saying? That's only, which, which is here, which town? Uh, I understand. I have and have, okay? Gina Jones's town, John Brown is Public Works. There's one and a half employees, there's not gonna be as much as... Right, 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 right.
So administrative salaries from Public Works?
Right, because John's four, and Gina Jones is one.
Okay, so I need to add that to the public works.
I have a question. So if we took out the five hundred dollar bonuses on preliminary proposed and...
That's the time you've been working with it. How many more?
That's the one I took, I guess I took hers and said, these numbers aren't wrong. We have to adjust these numbers.
Or can I just stop and not agree upon it?
Five hundred dollars for...
But usually you have to deal with that point. You're talking about taking a five hundred dollar... And you put it in the... Online, right?
That's correct.
Well, we don't have any money in there for any repairs.
Is it balanced?
Oh, it's, it's, it's a balance. But we're taking away their insurance for one. And I'm not willing to do that until we sit down and go through it. Yeah, this is, this one apparently includes their bonuses to pay.
The bonus and the cost of living.
Yeah, and on gas, yeah.
And, and the town's...
Yeah. Look, they're not, they're not being added. It's only about six thousand repairs now. It's gonna be a little one for the chemicals. We've already spent thirty thousand dollars of chemicals for eight weeks. That's three hundred.
Does this look like compared to the last sheet that we worked on? It's balanced.
Yeah, there is that sheet. Four different meetings going on.
Why should the, how did the numbers change?
Well, they're...
But I'm... We were getting boss numbers, worked with all this time last night, and now they've changed.
Yeah. Asking them like, we're saving how many employees we have.
No, it's not right, it's...
Well, we're not having a meeting.
That's the ten-minute break.
Do you need a ten-minute break?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, we are going to take a ten-minute break, thank you. We're about...
All right, now, where is this? Where's that budget? Where is that budget? Here, where is my old budget? Uh, where's my agenda?
So what is the date? What is the date?
June third is the correct date. Welcome to the meeting board, the board of trustees of the Town of Tallahena. Item number two, approval rejected consented to the minutes of the special meeting held on June the fourth.
Where's that one? Where's that?
Uh, on the agenda, so it's June the fourth, and on the minutes, it's June the third.
Ooh, can't do it.
I thought she did that change. Because he had this one there. So we had it that way.
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay, but on the agenda, you show the four. So what is it? June the third or June the...
My, my third is third.
Okay, so your agenda should have read the third.
We put it on next floor. We did it before.
I don't care.
It's still on the next one.
Yes, we are in session, thank you for asking. Okay. Oh, I need to tell y'all, I have food behind my ears, so if I say none or what, I didn't hear it.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh...
Okay, what day was it supposed to be?
June, June third.
June the third.
Yeah, I, I, mine was the third and his was the fourth. Take no action on that one, but on the next. Okay, next.
So what do you do on that one?
No action. My suggestion is no action, it's the wrong day. Item number three, approval rejected consented to the minutes of the special meeting held on June the eighth, two thousand fifteen. Make a motion to approve. Have a motion?
Uh, wait a minute. Now, the June the eighth meeting, the special meeting, it was held in the afternoon, wasn't it? Okay, you've got five-thirty here.
Meeting was called at order.
But up here, you need to change that.
Public Works first, that's the one.
Now, that was the public hearing.
So we, no, we did the public hearing, or we did the town public, public town. Yeah, that's how that was. Okay, well then, on the June eighth minutes for the board of trustees, it said they met on regular session on June third at two thousand fifteen at five-thirty. Meeting was called at order. And then you go on down, it says the meeting was called at order by Mayor Gregson at three eighteen. So it's contradicting itself. And then motion was made, the second by Bailey, of a special meeting on June eighth at three P.M. But then for the minutes from June eighth, we never did agree. Yeah, we did. It was on, it was at three o'clock. Well, you can't have a motion in here stating that you're gonna have this meeting on June eighth and then say, well, these are the minutes of that meeting, and it stated June eighth. You see? Sorry, we did six, uh, minutes. So you need to figure out which is the actual day of these minutes.
What date it was going to be?
It was, it's going to be the fifteenth, which is in your next seven minutes.
So I have to refer again. So you're saying instead of on item number three, it should be June fifteenth?
Yeah, because that was our next seven minutes, was June fifteenth.
And that has on item number five. Or June sixteenth, which was it?
We had one on the fifteenth, and we had one on the sixteenth.
Yeah, I thought one more for sixteen.
I thought we did one right after the other.
We did it on the third, on the sixteenth. We did one on the fifteenth, too.
Are you concurring with the sixteenth?
The sixteenth, the sixteenth was the hearing.
We had more than one meeting.
Yeah.
You had two parties. We did on the fifteenth. So item number three.
No, but she's saying, when we did on the sixteenth, we had the public hearing for the public to address the budget.
That was on the fifteenth.
It was on a Tuesday, was it not?
No action on item three.
It was the sixteenth, the fifteenth was the regular meeting.
We're going to approve it with the changes. What are the changes are?
June the sixteenth was a Tuesday, and I believe that's when we had that special meeting for the hearing was on a Tuesday.
So put item number three on.
No way.
Item number four, approval rejected consent agenda consistent of the minutes of the regular meeting held on June the eighth.
That's what I'm seeing. Here it is. There it is, right here. Now, this was a special meeting.
Okay, the board of trustees of the town Tallahassee met in regular session on June eighth, two thousand and fifteen at five thirty. Item number one, meeting was called by order by Mayor Gregson at seven twenty.
It's what I'm guessing. Because we did town, public works, public works.
Just like that.
So shouldn't this five thirty be moved to five, seven twenty?
No, because that's what, that's what time, I mean, is, is that not what the plan is supposed to put it?
No, you're supposed to put the time that it actually starts.
Sorry, okay.
And you don't have to put this number one again, because you've already called it to order up here.
Okay.
So this doesn't actually have to be on it. So I asked that the minutes from June eighth be amended to say the board of trustees for the town Tallahassee met in regular session on June eighth, two thousand and fifteen at seven twenty. Seven twenty, uh-huh. And then look down, Gina, on number item two and number three, you've got reg, the minutes of the regular meeting held on May the eleventh on both of them.
Okay, so what's, was that a?
So I don't know which day we're talking about, but it can't be the same one on two items.
So we'll take that one. Item number four. Item number five, approval rejected consent agenda consistent of the minutes of the special meeting held on June the fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, and I have a, uh, up there where it says the meeting was called by order by Mayor, Mayor Gregson, actually, we only did that one, so that needs to be changed. And then on number three, where you've got no action was taken, you needed to list what that was. Proposed budget was what we were discussing.
I thought we were still on June eighth.
She said no action.
She, she went to.
We're going to put it back on for the corrections. I don't like that.
Uh, but anyway, you need to show what it was, because you're going to run into the same thing we ran into today on looking back on old minutes, where we didn't know what they were talking about.
Okay.
We're on the fifteenth now?
Yeah.
Yes.
And your question was?
Going to change.
Mayor Gregson opening it, and this Gregson was on here.
And then to label what item number three is.
So I'll take no action on it.
So we're on the sixteenth?
No action on number five. And then six, approval rejected consent agenda consistent of the minutes of the special meeting held on June sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Is that right? Yeah, that's correct. You have to admit on the sixteenth.
All right, and the same way on number three on it, you just got a motion was made, you didn't say what.
And plus, you're not putting any public forum comments in here either.
I was told it was not.
Who, who told you that?
Public forum comments?
No, you, you have to put public forum comments in here.
You have to show, like, you don't have to go into detail, but you, like we talked about today, we have to say, Ms. Wolverton just talked about water rates or whatever. You have to say what they talked about.
Okay.
Just briefly.
So we're going to put these on a special meeting, so we get these things straight along with the window notice. Item number seven, approval rejected consent agenda consistent of the minutes of the special meeting held on June twenty second, two thousand and fifteen.
Same thing.
Yeah, you've got to label what it is.
Say what it is. So all these need to go on the special meeting. Item number eight, approval rejected, you go down the first two years.
Uh, I saw on here that there's a transfer out of three thousand dollars to the swimming pool.
Right, what I was doing was trying to project to make sure I had enough to cover the August first payroll. You know, we've got the July purchase orders, and then we'll have payroll this week, and then in theory, we won't have another meeting before that August one payroll. And so I may not need that much, but I needed to make sure you guys at least approved it in case I need help covering that payroll. And then before I transfer anything else, you guys will have another set of P Os to look at, so.
Where's it transferred from?
The general fund.
Okay. Since we, do we not have a financial report for this month?
No, did you not get that email last Friday?
Well, I saw you were going to try to have it.
Right, and I don't have it.
So how, I mean, so what, what's our bank balance right now?
I'm, I'm reconciling banks right now, Bonnie.
So we don't know our bank.
I did the projections.
So how, how can I take out the general fund if I don't know what's in the general fund?
You probably can't, but I'm just telling you I did the projections.
So you want me to, so what you're asking me?
Bonnie, I'm not playing this.
What you're, what you're putting on here is saying that you would like for me to transfer three thousand dollars out of something to pay for swimming pool costs, and I don't know what we're transferring out of.
She just don't know the general fund.
But she doesn't know what the general fund is, so if it's two thousand dollars, you want me to prove going in the hole?
Bonnie, please listen, it's kind of like I'm telling her, she don't have the money to pay for that twenty thousand dollar for the swimming pools you approved right now either. But it's based on projections, that's right. So I'm obviously not going to transfer money into the pool to the deficit of the general fund. If you don't feel careful, that's fine. That's what I did with the projections, that's what I came up with.
Did we not have money budgeted for the swimming pool?
Yes.
So you're saying we've gone over the budgeted amount for the swimming pool?
No, she's saying that the pool, at this time, she doesn't feel comfortable knowing that it's going to have enough money, that its revenue is bringing in to cover the expenses.
Last month, I was told it's breaking even, doing good.
It has been.
So, so why do we need to transfer?
And she can cover July, but she's not sure she's going to have enough to cover August.
But do we not have it budgeted?
Yes, and there was money budgeted in the general fund, transferring to the pool. So that's what she's asking, to transfer that money.
So, so what we're saying here is, is we're paying bills not knowing how much money we have in the bank.
Right.
Well, I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing what we have.
You're going to make it.
No. All I'm asking is, by law, you cannot transfer money out of one fund into another unless it's already overspent in that fund. You can't take more money out than you've got. Well, how do we know we don't if I don't know what a figure is?
It's grandstanding.
I mean, all I'm asking is, what do we have in the bank?
Well, if you want to not approve the pool, when we get down to new business, I'll discuss something with you that may solve that.
Can I ask a question, Henry?
Well?
I've heard, um, that open somebody that years ago that we had passed a poll tax to bill the pool.
Mm-hmm.
Did, was that just like a limited poll tax?
Two years, two years, and it fell off. And it did not pay for the pool, so we had to take one of our CDs and cash it in to finish paying the pool.
Approximately a hundred thousand dollar CD that we.
The council was due to its word at that time. We said we were going to have the pool tax for two years, and they did.
How much did you call that?
Three hundred thousand approximately.
For the pool.
How much was that?
The Chalk Donation not help with that also?
They didn't ask the Chalk Donation.
Yes, we did.
You said you didn't, I asked you.
I did not. I said I went and met with the board, you don't listen. I said I met, Marcy and I did, and talked to the Chalk Donation, and they never got back with us.
And I asked you at that meeting, I said, did you talk to Kenny Bryan about it, and what did you tell me?
It really doesn't matter, this is several years old.
Well, my point is, is we spent approximately three hundred thousand on the swimming pool.
Okay, okay, I'll make a motion to approve general fund purchase orders. I have a motion. And a second, any more discussion? Vote. Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number nine, approval reject cemetery purchase orders.
And here again, do we have money in that account to pay for it? Obviously not, because we're asking for a fifteen hundred dollar transfer to the cemetery fund.
How do we get this transfer? Why do we transfer money to sort of, I don't know, because I don't have any money in that fund. I mean, it's crazy, really, I don't get it.
If you're short of transfer.
So why are we short?
You know that answer, Sam, we've been over and over and over it.
No, why don't you do something if you don't make the money back? That's bad business, right?
Yeah. Sure is. So we don't mow your in-law, mow your relatives' graves?
No, no, I live, my, very white's room.
Okay.
What is it?
So, all right, then somebody's here, it's probably got relatives there buried. So, okay, yeah. Are we going to approve the reject cemetery purchase orders? I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second, any more discussion?
Is, is this money that we've already, he has already, that we owe him, he's already done the work?
No, no, we don't. One of them is, one of them isn't.
Right, it's one of them.
Seven fifteen and eight one.
So you could change this, and we could vote to pay him the seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And then wait on the other one.
And then say, let the cemetery grow up and not pay the other one.
Well, did somebody ask him to hold off mowing one time?
I heard they did.
Not that I know of.
Mary, have you heard that?
I haven't heard any special.
Hmm. Well, I heard it. I heard that somebody from the city asked him to hold off mowing one time, just recently.
And I'm sure they told you who said that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the person that actually mows it, so I don't know why he'd tell me different. But anyway.
Well, let's trust him in the end.
Well, let's just, uh, we say that, pray and pay the money that we owe. And hold off till next month.
Yes, we do.
Well, I.
We'll read the motion again. What was the motion?
The motion was to send the cemetery purchase orders, and it was made by Ron, it was seconded by.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
We already voted to transfer fifteen hundred over to it. Will we have it or not?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that was part of the, that was part of the regular deal.
Vote. Rank.
No.
No.
Donna?
Yes.
Ronna?
Yes.
What was, no, that was three thousand dollars on the pool.
Item number ten, approval rejected.
You did a double two.
And that's the pool purchase orders.
Under pool port purchase orders, Rhonda, didn't you say last meeting that the welding was donated for the diving board?
Sure thought they were.
And here shows a hundred and twenty dollars. Did we ever get a copy of the certification, welding certification?
I did not talk to Luke Greenwater personally.
So we still haven't got a certification to make sure it's done by a certified welder? And yet we want to pay it? Is that what you're telling me?
I thought he was donating. He came in and he asked to be paid. We had the money in the account to pay him. Mary asked my opinion, I said, how much was it? A hundred and twenty dollars? I said, my opinion, pay it.
I thought we just decided we didn't have money in the account, and we had to transfer three thousand.
No, to pay these invoices, there is money in the account. What she is doing is trying to project ahead to do the last payroll. That's why she's needing the money. Today, there is money in the account to pay for each one of them.
When, when are we going to get a certification?
I don't know.
Are you going to ask for one?
I talked with him, and he said that he had money.
Then we ought to have it here, on file.
We'll get it.
So who's going to, who's going to do that? You're over the swimming pool.
Yep.
Would you please get a cert, welding certification to make sure that this is done by a certified welder, so that if something happens, the liability's not just on us, it's on the welder? Would you please do that?
I'm working on it now.
I have a question about, uh, if somebody kind of worked for you, should they not be licensed upon and insured to do work for the city government, so that there, if there is a liability issues, they're insured to incur the cost for that, rather than having that work fall to the city?
I think it works to the town. I can't make a question.
You have that thing, he said he donated the contract.
It was a misunderstanding, apparently. When I volunteer to do things, I don't ask to be paid, and I, I just took it, and he says, I can get that slide fixed for you, you guys can keep the pool open. Okay, great, I assumed he was going to donate, but obviously, he needed the money, or he had other mis, miscommunication, he felt like, a hundred and twenty dollars for welding, I thought was very reasonable.
Yeah.
Great. So, that's, that's not going to happen anywhere.
My, my second question is Burton Pools. What are we buying from Burton Pools? Why are we buying our chemicals from Burton Pools instead of buying them from Southwest Chemical? In fact, I did not see some three inch tablets in that purchase order from Southwest Chemical.
Were you asking me?
Well, I can dig it back out again.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah.
Are you saying it should have been coated in pools?
Well, I'm saying we got chlorine, uh, chlorine cylinders, let's see here.
There was something that Burton Pools and Spas had that Southeast Chemical did not. I do believe that Philip has tried to get the best deal he can on it, and just as he was talking to us before about this copper fungicide, it was only available at Burton Pools and Spas.
So we're basically paying retail for it?
Probably.
I look at this invoice from Southwest Chemical for chlorine three inch tablets, a hundred and ninety dollars, three containers, seven hundred, five hundred and seventy dollars, and we're turning around and buying it from Burton Pools also?
Okay, well, I can just give you the answer from my office, which is there were no purchase orders for neither Burton Pools nor Southwest Chemicals, of which I was notified, so I was classifying based on the best of my ability, which is that Southwest Chemicals is water treatment. So to this moment, I don't know that that's not the case. I was able to confirm delivery, but if it went to the pool, we can do a reclass, and if that's the case, I apologize.
So, we paid a hundred and ninety for a fifty pound? And Burton Pool, how much we paying for fifty pounds there? And Burton Pools, how much we paying for fifty pounds there? I mean, we need to decide who's the cheapest and buy from them instead of buying two or three different people. I'm sure one of them's cheaper than the other. Am I correct in that assumption?
I'm abstaining from this. Some of the reimbursements to me. It's not even. It's not, uh, just over here.
I'm not even finding an invoice.
Maybe I need to look in that.
It's town of Tallahena. It should be public works, town of Tallahena.
Or Southwest Chemical, is that what you're looking for?
I already got that. I'm looking for Burton Pools. And it should be in Tallahena. I can't find it. Have you, you know where that is, Mary? Because I'm not finding it. I can't find the Burton Pool invoice. Well, I got all the town stuff right here.
All of the invoices were here when y'all started with them, but if you want to...
Is there one that says pool on it?
Yeah, it was, they were all attached to this and now they're all gone.
Okay.
So you want me to find?
There's several of these.
Okay, and I understand that. They'll say pool across the top.
Well, there'll only be one. That's the one that I got off my file.
Do you want me to find it for you?
Yeah, and I'd like to see what we're spending.
Okay, great. Well, why don't you hand me your pile and I'll find it for you?
Well, I already, you say it's in here.
I can assure you it was submitted to you. See, they all get pulled apart. It's so frustrating. What you got over here? You got any more? Look, the ones that say pool, there is a touch right there.
That's what we're looking for. Kitchen towels, kitchen towels. Outside, outside. Ladder back. What did we buy a ladder for, Rhonda? What are we doing on a ladder?
I don't think we bought a ladder.
It says ladder tread elite back, black, forty-one dollars. Ladder SS tread bolt, twenty-five dollars. Two-inch flow meter, two hundred and nine dollars. What do we need a two-inch flow meter for?
Which invoice was that for? I remember, who was it too?
That's town, city of Tallahena.
No, but who did we buy it from?
Burton. This is all Burton.
Nobody asked me about purchasing.
Another first aid kit, one of a hundred and forty-nine, and this one, a hundred and forty. We've got about two first aid kits.
Nobody asked me to buy a first aid kit.
Who, who's approving these?
The only things that I knew that we needed, I've already purchased and been reimbursed for because I went on Amazon and got them cheaper.
And we don't have proof that we actually received it. Confirmed receipt on seven-ten, okay.
All right, let's get through it.
I guess.
Yeah, they would need a first aid kit, but the...
Well, let me see.
At the beginning of the... At the beginning of the year, Shannon and I talked about it and I said, "Just go down Lawson's and get Band-Aids."
Well, it's not, is it Burton? DPS, that's Burton Pools, isn't it? Yep. So we spent three hundred dollars on first aid kits or more. Let me see what this other invoice, I saw a third one in here. Is that the same invoice?
Yeah, but it depends on...
Three, seven, eight, five, four, three, two.
Shannon, this is Rhonda. You're on speakerphone. We have a question about, uh, first aid kits. Did y'all receive some first aid kits for the pool this year? You didn't get any first aid kits for the pool?
No, I want Band-Aids.
At Lawson's, like you and I had talked about, right?
First aid is the name of a chemical product that's used to treat the water.
Ah, okay. No, but there was, there was a purchase order in here for like three hundred dollars for first aid. Like we had talked about. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry to bother you so late. I was like, "Why would she do that? I just told her to buy some Band-Aids."
Now I know what first aid means more than one thing. What was, what was the ladder again? Do you know anything about the ladder?
They were supposed to get a non-skid tape to put on the, not the ladder, but on the diving board. That could possibly be it. But there should be no ladders that I was aware of that need to be repaired.
There's no ladders there.
I mean, there's ladders going in from the deep end up. Yeah.
Ladder tread.
So ladder tread could be the non-skid tread that they were putting on the diving board.
And stainless steel tread bolts.
The teeth left already? I hope so. It's still here three hours ago.
What, what's the...
Katie, is he still here?
What, what's, what was the band hose? What kind of hose did we purchase?
At the beginning of the year, we had to have a vacuum hose because the vacuum hose was full of hose and it would not vacuum out the crud that was in the bottom of the pool. And it had not been replaced since the pool was done, was first done. It was very old.
And we're putting... And this, and this money we already have and that other one was for future use?
Yes. For August purchase orders. For August paper, paper. But there is a plan on that when we get down to new, new business if we ever get there.
I think.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Captain. Out of number eleven, public forum for the town. Is there anyone here for the public forum? Yes, sir.
I agree a little, uh, one of the laws, the state laws, uh, Title eleven, eight X one-eleven. Absolutes voting. It says, "If a member of a governing body of the municipal office stands for voting, he shall be deemed to have cast a negative vote and shall be required to amend."
Okay, thank you.
I have something that I'd like to ask about. A couple of questions on just, uh, some structural issues and administrative about, um, the content of your personnel records. You, you, I asked, I submitted a FOIA request for Mary Timmons, like her application and her resume and stuff. And the reason I did that was because she had a whole array of, um, you know, circumstances since she first came on board. Like she came on board on an informal contract, uh, and I think there was a time period specified, maybe two weeks, whatever it was. And there were some expectations at the end of that, that she was gonna be, apparently, that somebody got decided. But I didn't find any of that in writing, you know, what I mean? Uh, and then she transitioned from that into, uh, that was an hour away. It was supposed to be two weeks and it kept getting extended. I guess, I guess you guys reported on it.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm, I'm just gonna, it really has nothing to do with this specific issue. It's just a general question. And, uh, I was kind of alarmed that I only found one page and that one page in her personnel record was only added in April. And, uh, it was nothing to do with Mary necessarily receiving or anything that they had. I just picked her because it was all a surface hit. Now, do we not keep good records on people? Do we not?
Uh, first of all, when we say Oklahoma, um, I'm gonna take responsibility for that because at that point, the, the personnel files were my responsibility. And so at the time that you submitted that public records request, I found that the most appropriate and ethical thing to do was to give you what was actually there as opposed to adding those things after the fact, which is why it was so slim. So that's my fault. Now, having said that, actually have on my day planner this week because as with many of the records here, I inherit a really incomplete set. And so what I have, I found the time to do and what I'm going to make the time to do is audit the personnel, uh, personnel files to make sure that they're complete.
Okay. There's, I have a concern that if somebody asks you, like, "Are you compliant with," and this is not for you necessarily.
I understand, I understand.
But, uh, since you're gonna be taking care of the personnel records, will they ask you, you know, if you've done your background investigations? Will they ask you for copies of meetings made? And I, I just, I just thought it was kind of, uh, kind of really sad.
Right.
That the records are so, uh...
Yeah, like on my fault, right. And so when we have a new hire, there's a packet that I have together. It's, uh, an employee handbook. They sign an acknowledgement, your I9s, all that kind of stuff. And that stuff was in my file, okay? Um, I didn't put a resume in there per se because those had been submitted to the council, okay? So I didn't have one that was turned back to me. It wasn't anything being a basic, I just didn't. Like I said, I wasn't gonna add it after the fact. But in terms of, you know, the new hires in general, it's filling out all these, uh, tatulated and ID forms. As far as background checks or something like that, all I have is what's given to me. And so what I want to do and what I plan to do is audit a complete set of files and basically make a list by employee deficiencies. And we're gonna bring those up to speed because you're absolutely correct. Those files are not even...
Those are very important and stuff.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And the one specific thing about yours, you have supervisory authority over two employees. Do I understand your position description very clearly?
Uh, that, that might be best asked to the council. I don't want to speak on their...
She has supervisor authority over one person, John.
Okay, over John. Okay. So you have to update your position description.
No, it says one.
You have the wrong one.
You've got the wrong one.
Because of the...
It says, uh, utility clerk in court work. I guess that's the same person.
Yeah.
We're gonna move on because of the late hour.
Okay, I just, I just have, I just have one other thing that I don't wanna bring up and, um... And I think she, did she wanna say her department longevity? Um, with regard to her longevity pay, which applies to both, uh, cornets and agendas, do you have a policy in that in the employee's handbook or in the personnel record to demonstrate that there is an actual policy on longevity? It's all we got at that table of, for fifty years of raises. Twenty-five, that's the policy. Any changes or not? Is it in policy? Is there a policy about longevity constantly, uh, bonuses, any of that? Any kind of, did the boards ever pass?
It's in the, uh, personnel, I mean, the...
Tom skin procedure?
Yeah, it's in the handbook also. I don't know about longevity because that handbook's been, it's trying to be updated for a while.
Cause I, I read through that handbook and I don't recall it anyways. Is there an actual policy?
Well, we've gotta go with department by department on all of our policies and procedures and bring them up to date and clarify and so...
Yeah, because I, I think you run the risk, and I'm gonna try to make this really brief because I think that's a long time. Uh, is, you gotta have your infrastructure and you gotta have your policies defined. You gotta have it discussed and approved. You gotta have them as a matter of record. Nobody should ever have to guess or be told, "Look, we had, we discussed that in a meeting a couple of years ago." And then you can't find a minute for it. So, uh, I would encourage you to, uh, to, uh, make a decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
Laura, or anyone else? Did you need to speak?
I wonder, what's the requirement for, for the kids for, for swimming pools for them being qualified?
They have to be, to be a lifeguard. They have to be Red Cross certified. Uh, they take a training with Eastern.
Okay. Has that been forward? They have to have that qualification before they're hired?
They are hired with the stipulations that they pass. And if they do not pass or complete their training, then they are not hired. And we had one incident where one of the girls that was hired did not meet the qualifications. She did not pass, so she was not hired. We have, we hire them ahead of time and then, so we have the employees in place. But if they do, and where they're hired with the stipulation that they have to pass their lifeguard certification. And each one of those personnel files will have a copy of that certification.
Okay, if you, if you had somebody that had already qualified, that had put in an application, why would they not have been hired than for somebody that was gonna have to be qualified?
We looked at everybody's applications and a decision on hiring was made. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but everybody that put in an application, they were looked at.
But if, 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 if here, it's already been qualified and...
And there were some that were hired.
They don't get hired, but one if they don't get hired, it has to be qualified.
There might be a reason why they didn't get hired, sir, but I can't discuss that with you as far as personnel. Huh?
Can you discuss it if it's not your house?
No, not in a meeting, no ma'am.
Well, you can discuss it, uh, you can ask the...
Yes.
You can ask to address it before the council and the private session, you have that right. So they, say they did it on the husband, if they don't want to hire, they don't want to hire.
Uh, that's enough of that. It's not. What's, what's your answer?
I think...
Jerry, press it.
I have Jerry.
Press it. Didn't like it.
I am, it's almost ten o'clock and we need to go.
This is lasting so long that I have a hundred minutes.
We're arguing with each other like a bunch of little kids. That's why it's lasting so long.
Would you like to leave?
No, but I thought these people talk during public forum. This is public forum, isn't all it is? Don't have the right to talk.
But the council mayor also has the right to say how long the public forum is gonna go on. Or if there is one. Or if there is.
I'll just put your acts together and then quit talking about how many minutes they're asking.
Could you ask for it, please? That's what we're...
Are you kidding me?
No, I'm not. We never, unless we want...
Well, first, first of all, what authority?
Um, that it can be done.
Uh, what statute, what, what ordinance is it?
Hot chill.
You know, I, I think we need to, I think what we all need to do is just have to calm our minds, calm our heads, and let's get through this. Yes, there is too much argument. I agree. But we've got to get through this. So, so, so. And I, and I will assure you that if nobody had a chance to speak, would like to speak, I will yield my time under board member comment to give the public an opportunity to speak. You know, well, and, and let's be honest, by law...
You have a right to be here. You do not have a right to speak.
They're public forum?
Yes, ma'am.
But if it's on there, you do.
It's in the word.
No, the council has been on, and I recognize.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Hey. Let, let's all, let's all calm down.
Let's go.
And we'll get through this.
That's not true. Uh, it's no problem with being heard behind.
No, obviously, I can talk to you. I know it's not...
No, you're just talking.
I know, we're trying to get...
Out of number twelve, attorney's report. There is no action on that. Out of number thirteen, discussion and action on the county permission for councilmen. Okay.
Is there much to do on senior citizens of management?
No, I think we should assign a council member to...
How about administration, Donna?
Ministry. I understand what the situation's going here, but if people can't speak, then they get really angry. And I don't know how to express myself, but I'm extremely upset. And we hire you guys. You run our town. Our town supports you. We really don't like you guys, but we respect your support. And I understand that got out of hand. All of this has gotten out of hand.
I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Susan. That's ridiculous.
Let's, let's, let's get past that. Let's, let's drop it and move forward.
Uh, Donna, are we, are we gonna do two people with everything?
I don't know.
Okay, let's do, we're, fill me in somewhere. How about administration, Donna? Okay. Uh, Parks and Rec, Rhonda?
You're gonna do Renee on administration.
If you wanna help, that's fine. I'll venture down the hall.
To help, no, we'll work it together.
Donna, I need Renee. Yeah, administration.
Okay.
Okay. What do we do on this side?
Administration and.
I work with the fire department since I gave up on commission.
The fire department? Donnie and Ronda, you know, the fire department?
Yeah.
That would make a motion on all this.
We know, we're just, we are working it through your. Emergency management.
I'll work with you, was it?
Well. All right, I could work with her on that, let's do the Parks and Rec, is that all right? Emergency management.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's not anything to it, really.
Nothing to it.
There, yeah.
Same with senior citizens.
So is somebody on there? I'm Renee.
On there.
On that.
I think we need a commissioner of management, we're just.
Emergency management.
You are.
Renee, why?
Well, Gina's on there.
What about?
Gina, Gina and Rhonda for emergency management.
Do you want me? I don't.
What about lock clean up?
You're going to emergency management?
Yeah, yeah. So Renee is, yeah.
Renee, okay, so I'm off emergency management, you put Renee in.
Cemetery.
I just put my name here because Jake hit them before, there's not much to do on that either.
We got cemetery, medical building and senior citizens.
And lock clean up.
And, well, that's all.
You need to go up on the airport.
Yeah, I mean, I think there'll be two on everything. Keep us in line.
Parks and Recreation is me right now, and Renee, will you stay with me on Parks and Recreation?
Sure, yeah, sure. It doesn't matter.
Okay, I'm looking at, do we want to, uh, senior citizens, are we keeping Donnie? Donnie, are you keeping?
Yeah, I try to take care of them.
And somebody, that's not me, that's one too. Medical building, um, Donna and Renee.
I was just trying to see if it was balanced so nobody got more work than the other one there. And try to balance it out barely.
Lock clean up, I was.
It's all of us.
Yeah, we need to divide it in the section.
I think it's.
Push it through.
They used to do that a long time ago. We had.
Section.
Yeah, we need to study and we'll get them back for the sweep.
Okay.
We can do, I'll put that on for the next, I'll put it on for the next sweep.
For us, that'll be good.
Yeah. Donnie, you want the airport?
Yeah, we're still working on it.
Somebody with Donnie in the airport?
I will.
Cemetery, senior and medical.
I'll do cemetery with you.
Okay.
I'll do medical with you.
You'll do medical, and Donna will do medical with you. Is that pretty balanced?
Anybody with Donnie, senior citizens? You? I can do that.
I think that's five, I think that gives it balance, is what I'm working on.
Police department. Come on there, balance, send people to me.
I want the.
Are you still?
That's for nine, it's four, right? I'm on water plant, emergency.
She has five.
Administration, Parks and Rec and airport.
Just balance now?
Pretty much.
That's good.
Donnie was four, Renee was five, Renee was five, just Gina was five, two.
Do I have no?
One, two, three, four, five.
Lock clean up.
Two, three, four, you've got five, is that lock clean up? So give Donnie lock clean up.
We all do lock clean up.
We all do. Obviously, for myself.
I'll see cemetery, emergency management, senior citizens, police department. One, two, three, four.
What about coming up in your fifth one?
You can have four. Get the light.
Okay.
I make a motion to assign commissions as listed. Do we need to do them individually?
We just do.
Let's do them all, I'm watching them list them all.
I think we can list.
Police department.
Call me if somebody's.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, police department, Gina and Donna, street department, Rhonda and Donna, senior citizens. Senior citizens is Donnie and Gina, medical building is Gina and Donna.
No, I forgot you. Oh, it's you. Is it Donna or Donnie?
Donna.
I had planned that it was Donna was going to do medical building with you. And I was going to do cemetery with you.
Doesn't matter, it's.
Oh, that was your fifth, okay.
Okay.
Medical building is Gina and Donna, emergency management is Gina and Renee. If I'm going too fast, let me know. Fire department is Donnie and Rhonda, administration is Donna and Renee, cemetery Gina and Rhonda, Parks and Recreation is Rhonda and Renee, and lock clean up is the council.
Airport.
Airport.
Airport is Donnie.
And Renee.
And Renee?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that motion and second, any more discussion?
Who's the second?
Me. Okay.
Yes.
Renee?
Yeah, yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Ronda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
I'm putting on the special meeting. Yes, but, um, I'm putting on the special meeting. So we're, you know, that was.
What is it?
On the dispatcher room and I hold that off until.
Okay.
Hi.
Tableting.
Tableting her and do dispatches.
We're going to, to the special meeting. Miss the special meeting. Okay, anything, is that a special, a special meeting?
Yeah.
Two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks.
No action on that? Donnie, anything we need to decide on the airport tonight?
Um, you can, you can table it, we're, Dell and I are putting together options right now on everything. Trying to pull everything together to make a presentation for work and figure out what we want to do and some stuff, so we can technically table it.
Okay, so today is the thirteenth, so you want to do the twenty-seventh.
We got to do this the same night, we're trying to get ECO here, ECO here, any attorney?
I have to check with the attorney, he's in a case.
And you're not going to be able to set that meeting right now.
Not going to be able to set it. Cause we need to find out whether these other people, these professionals, they come in.
You can still work from airport right in the day. You can just discuss.
Yeah.
Can we just do it at the next regular month? He can be, discuss, he can be working on it.
On what?
Just do the airport grant.
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
And we've already tabled the next one.
Oh, you did, what are you on?
I think.
I can't hear y'all.
It was unofficial tabling, I was just going down through it.
Oh, okay.
Gina had not got through, got down to it, just asking if we could, so we've done. So we're not, for my notes, no action on fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, we've already discussed seventeen. That could be no action. Table eighteen.
What was seventeen?
Seventeen was protocol, we already discussed it under.
Yeah, that we're going to do it in a future meeting.
So I'm just going to put no action on mine then.
Well, I'd put, I'd put tables for a future, to a future meeting.
But make sure you put what it was for, no action for, on.
Okay.
Board member protocol or whatever we discussed at a future meeting.
Yeah, just put to be discussed at a future meeting.
So we can table that. Lock clean up, table that. Have you been sitting up to your eyes?
Yeah, I'm.
Stuck right here. Do you have any questions for us?
Yes, any.
Okay. These are not nearly enough of what I need to do, but I have been working on audits. These, the four, have all been given lock letters, and then they cleaned it up, and now it's bad again, okay? So I'm doing them in groups like that.
So these are all four thousand eleven?
And I wanted to know what y'all spot was on those because if I send a letter out, like, for instance, these, if y'all want to look through, these are ones that letters went out and then they got cleaned. Okay, these are ones that need a certified letter because, um, the courtesy letters didn't work. These are reoffenders.
Oh, reoffender, yeah, I'm sorry, that is me offenders.
Oh, okay. So the reoffenders, there should be three of those, there's three of these, and it's, no, there's four of those, three of these, and then three points. It's a reoffender, that all, the whole package I was thinking of was reoffender.
Okay.
And that means that I sent a letter out and it got cleaned and then it got dirty again, or it got overgrown again. So do you want, do you want, if, if they got it cleaned and it worked, do you want a secondary courtesy letter or do you want a certified letter?
Uh, just.
When did it clean, when was it cleaned?
This one was cleaned like on two fifteen. Uh, so they cleaned it in February, and now on seven thirteen, it's top again, so they haven't done anything with it since then.
Right.
If they cleaned up, and then when we ask them to the first time, I just send a courtesy letter again.
Okay.
See if they, if they don't, then do the certified.
That's what I needed to know because I didn't want to resend the letter courtesy letter, and then only to have y'all say, well, next was supposed to be certified. So if they resend, so if they didn't clean it, then we want to send the letter re.
Just have, just send a courtesy letter on those, in my opinion.
All we need to look at, Gina, in my opinion, is the ones that have not taken action that we need to send a certified.
These are the ones that, well, this one in particular, um, I'll let y'all, so, um, what happened was, I had asked her to clean it and she comes, or I sent her courtesy letters, she came in and literally chewed me out for sending it. And then, uh, her daughter, ex-daughter-in-law called me and said, I'll go do it. So she went and did it, and then it looks like she cleaned her side of the yard again, but she didn't want to clean the rest of it, she didn't want to clean it, which is what she's chewing me out for.
I don't, this looks like an improvement to me in this picture.
It's an improvement, but it's grown up again.
Is this grass twelve inches high out here?
Yes.
Doesn't show up on the picture.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was a camera.
No, no, that's why I'm asking her, because here, it has to be twelve inches tall.
Well, there are some, some parts of that that are, but if y'all are okay with it, I'll let it go.
I think we have worse lots to worry about.
I know we do, that's, that was, I, I know we do. But if you would like me to work on that, stick it in the audits, I'll be happy to. This one, I think needs a certified letter, I've sent it one before, I think it's. I think you're probably familiar with that. This one also has never had anything done.
Need to have order.
And these were all clean, if you want to look at them, that's the two here.
Okay, so the two that we have are these two that need, what about that? I'm good with that one.
It was three.
Okay.
We did that other one, what did we decide on that other one?
That one down there that Renee's looking at?
Right.
It's clean except for a little bit of mowing right there by the edge.
No, if you'll look farther back, I guess, but here's the thing, I can't step on their property.
No, we cannot.
And so my camera's going to have to do just the best that it can do. So you can drive by there and, you know, you can.
Personally, there's about ten lots I can think of that looks a hundred times worse than that. That doesn't look that bad.
If y'all are okay with that, I'll clean it.
Okay, so we need a motion on which lots we want to send a letter to, correct?
Right, and there's two for sure that really, in my mind, stick out, and if y'all are okay with that, I'll put it in our.
That's next to Ms. Montgomery, isn't it?
Yes, it hasn't been touched all year. And actually, it hasn't been touched longer than that because back when I was doing lots, I tried to call her and talk with her about doing it, and she didn't respond to her courtesy call.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I make a motion that we send a certified letter.
And this one.
For the property at eight oh nine Church Street. Is it still in R.L. Bond's name because it, he has passed away and is now to his granddaughter, Renetta.
Transferred over, I can't send it to.
Who, who owns it?
It's R.L. Bond, but he has passed away and his granddaughter, Renetta, is who I believe inherited, I think she was the only.
The problem with an inherited property is if, let's say, for goodness sakes, somebody in my family passed away and I mixed in my to get it, but if I don't want it, it's not mine, I mean, it, it can't just be mine because that was my parents and now they're not here.
I guess we have to see if he's paying taxes on it.
Can we really assume to, that it's her fine?
Can you see if he's paying taxes on it?
It should be in the legals over here.
And I guess we just send it to them.
Well, there is, we'll say, the legals still have Janice M. Hoster, Hoster.
Can you send her a letter?
With y'all's approval. I sent her a courtesy letter because I go by the legals on.
Okay.
These.
So then I made my motion to send the letter to.
Janice.
Janice.
Hoster. Okay. Hoster.
Mm-hmm, it's listing both owners, it's listing Bond, R.L. and Janice M. Host- Hoster.
So do I send one to each?
Pacing that far back over here, I just got to read that.
I have to, I have to. Send it to her because he's dead, it's just going to be a waste.
Janice is another daughter.
Is she?
Yeah, it's going to be a waste and it's R.L. Bond, so.
Actually, it's only listing one address, so.
Send it to that address?
That address.
Okay.
I need to second on my motion.
And what about?
We only have a, we have a, a motion made, no second?
Is that the burnout?
We do have a second. I'll second it, okay? Any more discussion? So, Renee?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Rhonda? Yes.
Doing this one?
Yes. Uh, twenty, discussion in the next lot. There's one more lot.
Yeah, where's this one at?
That one is, um.
Is that next to the burnout house?
Yeah, it was a trailer and it looks like it caught on fire. We, they did come down, no, somebody actually.
But there's still structure of theirs, there not?
No, it's not really a structure, there's like a wall.
Yeah, I mean, there's something there and that's not showing up here.
There's something there that is just dark.
No, on, uh, nine.
It's on nine street, down from me.
The last time I was taken care of is when we had something, we started out.
You know we're not, not a grab.
So there's two lots and one of them has that structure and the other one doesn't?
No, it's one lot, but the structure, you can barely see it because it's kind of dark, it's burnt out, and so it's black.
Well, once they break the odds on that, they need it one time.
At one time, they did.
But it shows in Josh Harjo.
Josh Harjo. And he just had, I don't know, he had heart surgery or something, so, um, I've spoken to him, he's had a courtesy. I can't do anything without council approval.
I make a motion to send the letters, certified letter to Josh Harjo for property at three hundred ninth street.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second, any more discussion? But, Bailey?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bond? Yes. Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina? I have a number twenty, discussion and action on longevity pay schedule.
No action.
No action. I have a number twenty-one, discussion and action, those budgets for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, it's for you.
I'll be quite honest, I don't have the stamina, I don't know about you guys, it's ten fifteen.
We can do it in another meeting. We can do it in another meeting.
Okay, you want to say that?
But I want, Mary, I still need some clarification on how you're planning on cutting $70,000 out of the police department.
Just missed it.
I mean, we don't have to do it now, but when we come to the next meeting.
I'm gonna give you a general explanation, which is gonna be the same as the one that I made you before, which is I looked at the historical, made the budgets based on the hours we had, the staff met with the department. You're welcome to have access to those hours and then, you know, maybe you should meet with them because they're not solely my numbers.
Well, I know, but historically.
I understand historically and so I actually did a little review today to make sure I had the answer for you. And when I adjust historically for, um, the hours on the officers and the dispatchers, then basically I'm working off an assumption that we're wanting to be limited to one dispatcher for turnover and no officers. And in that case, then we can meet the hourly requirements that I've budgeted for.
When you say no officer for turnover, what are you telling me?
I'm telling you that nobody's gonna leave. In other words, if, if we.
So it's the current employees and one less, current employees in the police and one less in dispatcher? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we've already lost a dispatcher, so I counted for that, yeah. In other words, if we don't have any more turnover, then that's how it works because that's when we have to double staff. And so I actually looked at three years' worth of hours. Um, I did it two ways. I looked at it that way, but then I also did it building from scratch. In other words, I know we have to be staffed 24/7 and then that's my way into full-time and part-time. And I'd be happy to review those calculations.
Yeah, I need to try to get my arms around a $70,000 difference.
Okay, sure. Why don't I, um, why I said that, and then you can ask me whatever questions. So I did take a second look at that today for your point of view?
Uh-huh, appreciate it.
That's what those lots are for, guys. It makes it easier to.
So we want to table this for two weeks?
Yes, please.
Can we set a date? So I've not made a plan with my life. Yeah, we don't have a, we've got to get a hold of some people. Okay. No action?
No action.
Number 22, new business for the town.
Okay, with the pool, we are now down to three lifeguards. We have had a lifeguard leave for a professional job. His last day, his last week is this week. We've had one quit because he wasn't getting enough hours. We're down to three lifeguards. On July 25th, which is a Saturday, I do believe, she has no lifeguards to run the pool. We have one lifeguard who was scheduled to be there and he has informed our manager today that he has a birthday party in Tulsa to go to. Now, I can be strong and I can say, "I'm sorry you're scheduled to work" if that's what you want me to do.
It's what we need to do.
I have no problem doing that. However.
I remember this just here that she had that tip with it. Her son's applied and I think she's, she had two sons.
And they're already certified.
And they were already certified and she said that they didn't need to get any interview. But I don't know.
I don't either. So at this late date, I don't want to go back to the interview process and interview and hire.
Now, what, what did the one that quit, what's he doing? He certainly get more hours now if he has found a job.
Don't quote me, but I think I was told that he got on at the hospital at $10 an hour. I think is what the story was, but I could definitely be wrong on that. Okay. Um, we have parties booked for August 2nd, one party, and we have two parties booked for August 8th. We were, we were, our original plan was to go through August 8th. With shortages of lifeguards, if we want to close the pool at the end of July, we probably won't have to transfer any money and we could just refund the two parties. Is that what the community wants, is for us to, to close the pool for an extra, a week currently?
Well, if we don't have any lifeguard yet, too.
We've just, we've just gotta be responsibly.
But are we putting this in their personnel files so next year, when they want to apply for a lifeguard job and we know they bailed on us if you go to parties and stuff like that, we're gonna rehire them again next year?
We definitely will put in there if one is, is one that is scheduled to work today and I go back and say, "I'm sorry, you had, you have to work that day." If they refuse to work that day, I will definitely put it in there.
You want to mess with it?
But we're talking about somebody that's young, very young.
Can, can you, I mean, I, I don't know. Can you call other area pools to see if they got lifeguards that couldn't come in?
Then we have to go through the hiring process again, the interviewing process.
Part of that is if they are already work, currently working.
Well, it doesn't look like we're making as much money now, so if.
If they're working for another pool.
They're not working for us, though. So we have to go through the interview process and, and go through a special meeting and hire.
Background checks and everything else.
They would probably already have it if they're already working in another pool, it's one of the same.
I'm sorry?
Why did those two kids get an interview?
Why did those two kids get an interview? Why didn't they get an interview? I'm not certain that they didn't. I need to go back and look at my Bulger sign. I'm not gonna.
Did you say, have you remembered?
I thought they did.
And if you guys have a shortage.
I'm not sure who her son was, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure they did. We didn't know, sitting here. That's why I said I'm not gonna say they didn't.
Okay, well, um, if you've already interviewed them, do you have to do the hiring process again if they disown that you did?
That's what we're deciding. It's worth going through the process again for a week. Or is it better just to shut the pool down?
No, we wouldn't have to go back through and advertise again. I do not believe. We've already advertised once.
How many lifeguards do you have now that will work?
Three.
Can you shut them to the public but still have parties with three?
We have, the problem is we have to treat the water and so our cost goes way.
Okay, so would it be worth it to go ahead and rent
Right.
the pool by 4/15?
So you've got, you've got three until the 25th, is what you're saying?
There, two of them are going on vacation. See if Shannon texted me, because I told her I don't remember this late at night. Two of them had asked at the very beginning of the summer that they were gonna go on vacation during this time. So I have no pride with those two because they had put this in at the very beginning of summer.
Right.
Um. Yeah, it's Saturday, the 25th. Possible close date of Saturday, August 1st, or stay open till August 8th, as planned. You let me know.
So you're saying we're down to one lifeguard after the 25th?
Wish I could remember, guys.
And none of our managers are lifeguard eligible?
No, they're not.
There's something we need to do next year.
Okay. We already know that mistake, but maybe next year.
You're gonna be looking for two new.
Yeah, I know, and they're, what we have is really good, but anyway.
Because I've already asked them. They weren't interested. I was asking them if they would do this for next year and they were a little receptive of that.
So, I don't know. Do we have one lifeguard after the 25th of July? I mean, what can you do? Because if you get in a bind.
Well, you can do how many, you can do what, 20?
Can we do a volunteer lifeguard? Would we technically have to hire a volunteer lifeguard?
If it's volunteer, you wouldn't hire them.
Wouldn't hire them.
But what's the likelihood of that?
I don't know if it's a possibility or not. I don't.
What's the likelihood if you did that, though?
Well, if we don't have lifeguards, we shut the pool down. Did we sell any advertising?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
I probably signed, but you haven't even submitted it yet. Have you bought a sign?
For, for two weeks.
Did you sell?
No, it's gonna be up for all year.
Oh, it'll be up for all year.
Remember?
I ordered three signs. What would be a good, have a, like a small sign, still with the ears and green ears. You know, just a smaller one.
Donna, they should be ready this week and Donna's gonna go and get a call and check on them.
Is it like $25 or $30 or something?
Yeah, it's built, and there's a purchase order already for it. And the money has already been processed and received.
One at a time, so I can figure out what's just being said.
Okay.
One at a time.
That would be good.
So do you want me, as I'm hearing you, I'm gonna foresee issue with the one lifeguard for the 25th? Have one lifeguard. If we have more than 25 people in the pool, the pool will have to close.
Or they don't have to close, we just can't admit more than 25.
We can't admit more than 25. That's all one lifeguard.
So you'll have to close it. You can have the one lifeguard and, and just do a certain amount, make sure it's not over that.
And then if we do not have lifeguards to do the other ones, we'll just close early.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's number 23. Board trustee comments. So under the business, we won't be able to.
Well, discussion was if lifeguards were not available, that there's a possibility the pool will close at the end of July.
Okay.
Yes, I would like to, not on my behalf, take the up on the public form thing that you mentioned if someone didn't have time. I actually was obligated to do this and due to the excitement, I just was deer in the headlights. Um, Gina and I filled in a complaint, Gina Jones and I filled in a complaint Friday. And, um, I asked the lady to basically write her complaint up and that's what I've copied here for you. I told her I would submit it in the public form.
And I have an email where the attorney.
Right, he's just.
I've got the.
They have questions, yeah.
The what, the letter?
Yeah.
If you want a copy, I'll.
Can we make a motion to adjourn?
Unless there's, uh, yes, may I?
This is ridiculous.
Sorry.
Well, the attorney said, "I'm not touching that."
Yeah, we, we can't.
No.
That's absurd.
Yeah.
We agreed on something. Yeah, agree.
Um, I, I had a couple questions and you're probably gonna be like banging in for another song. But I don't want to interrupt it. Um, on our last 2009 audit, I know you weren't there to do that and I could answer current question today. One of the things that they had stated is that we practiced a, a form of accounting that was other than what was normally accepted by the accounting thing. Are we up to par now? I mean, are we doing better now or are we still gonna like get that same, you know, parameter?
There are plenty of things in that audit that did not reflect well in this office. That particular term is not one. It's language that's used in accounting and auditing. They'll say, um, you know, principles, uh, other than FASB or GASB, okay? Government Accounting Standards Law. Well, sorry, it's late and I'm not. So basically, it's a little disclaimer that I put in there. We do our books on a modified cash basis, okay? And because that's not the generally accepted method, doesn't mean it's wrong. Now, when I first came, I requested a sit-down with the auditor to express some of my concerns and also to make sure that I was doing things that would coordinate with him. I always love to coordinate with auditors. And one of the things I've said to him at the time is, "I hate this modified cash basis." You know, how do you properly assign your, your costs, you know? Why not accrual? And when we visited about that, you know, he made some points as to why accrual wouldn't be the most cost-efficient from a time point of view for the government office. And for that reason, the city's used the modified cash basis. But going back to your original question, there are plenty of things that were wrong that they said of us. That was not one. It's just the term that's used.
Okay, so, so like my thing was is if, and I know that you could only affect the time that you were.
Right, 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 right.
Um, so there's gonna be a lot of changes from.
Oh, yeah, at awards.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, we've already sewed up so many of those issues. Uh, you know, you can always approve on internal controls. There's no office in the country that can't approve. So I'm not in any way pretending that it's perfect. You know, there are so many things that we tackle. There are so many more that we need to. But I would say as far as these specific items that they were written up for and the lack of records and a lot of the procedural issues, we've resolved those.
Okay, are we still doing the dashboard?
Yes, we're still on modified cash basis and that was in the direction of the auditor. I have one more question on the town side. It's gonna be the same questions as about the other part. Okay, the title number.
Title number 11.
Okay.
Uh, the bill of deductions that governments are telling us.
Okay, um, I actually have those in my office and I, I can have it in the daughter's email before I leave.
Do you?
Yeah.
Well, just, you know, tomorrow.
Yeah, it's fine, because I have it handy, but rather than rattle them off, I'll just put them in.
Oh, that's great, great.
Maybe, maybe before you run, I might just have one more question, actually.
I did too.
I saw we transferred 45,000 out of Public Works in the TLT.
No, that was a purchase order for that.
Okay.
So it's not been done.
Okay, but it was under, the consent agenda, was it not?
It was with the purchase orders.
Okay, for trans, operating transfers to the town of Tallahena for 45,000. That means we want to move 45,000 from Public Works to the.
I won't have that much to move.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
And I won't, but basically what we have, that's about what we would need to transfer to cover everything. It's just like the last time I gave you guys a PO for a transfer. Um, I did it at 20 because that was the max that I would need. I didn't need that much. I make sure because I can't transfer unless I meet with you guys that, you know, I, I have, I have that covered. And certainly it's within the scope of the operating transfers in the budget or it will be now.
Well, I'm saying that, though, but if we do that 45 total.
Right.
That leaves basically 100,000 transferred the rest of the year.
Okay. I understand what you're saying.
Which means we have less than 10,000 each month.
Okay.
That we can transfer out.
Okay.
Is that, is that accurate assumption?
Well, and we, y'all did approve Public Works, so, but here's the thing. I may not do that 45.
Right.
Okay, so I can't say, yes, that's how much we left. But yes, if we did the full 45, that is the case.
That'd leave us less than 10,000 a month transferred the rest of the year. Okay.
I have a question. Why don't you ask it in the. Tell you the works. I get confused on which one. But, um, it's about revenue. I tried bringing in any like the annexing. And, you know, I don't make my big paper, you know, that Paul was crossing into and stuff. And, you know, technically, I saw the state limits. And, you know, I know that we went out there just like we always do and stuff like that. But anyways, I just didn't know what the headway was. Were we annexing on either side of the city and where we were at? If we were gonna get the EZ mark and what potential revenue would be off of that?
I think we're on agreement that we all need to do that.
Right.
But we're trying to get this budget done where we can move on and do those things.
I thought we were already, I thought we already had the EZ mark.
No.
We have.
No, no, this isn't one we leave it.
Oh, no. This one here?
I just did that one.
Yeah, I thought she was talking towards like one of the top.
Oh, true.
I was here.
I was here.
Okay, now you.